The ninth meeting of our Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission to order. At this time, if you would stand with me, Commissioner Mike Vought will lead us in our prayer and our prayers. Mike.
Goodbye, Reg. Well, gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us together, together, to do the county's business. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct us, give us wisdom to do it in a way that you might see fit. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I would like to introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mike, Mike, yeah, what you call Ralph, please?
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Richie Boland.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush. Craig Lynch.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vought.
Here.
Vincent Windrow. Jeff Phillips.
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I think in front of you, you have a copy of the proposed, uh, order. Uh, I don't think we need a motion on it, or you might take a second to look at it, and you can have any questions. There are no items withdrawn or deferred tonight?
No, sir. Thank you. This first request is located at forty-five forty West Jefferson Pike. The property was rezoned to retail wholesale trade in nineteen ninety-eight and has since been used for an antique store, a flower shop, and a wellness center. So, it's been a variety of things. The applicant is proposing to use the existing building for a daycare center for up to thirty children. The center would have a total of eight employees, which would be split between two shifts. The applicant is planning on adding a fenced-in play area and also will need to expand the existing septic system to support this new use. There is a small gravel parking area, which was established by previous businesses on the site. However, it will not be adequate to serve the daycare center of this size. A minimum of eight parking spaces and a turnaround area will be required for this use. Um, the applicant, the parking lot, of course, will have to meet commercial standards. And the applicant will, if this is approved, will need to submit a site plan to show these improvements. The Rutherford County Comprehensive Plan shows this property located within a Jefferson Pike Employment Center, and this area, this use would fit within those recommended uses. Uh, that was just a little sketch the applicant turned in showing where the fenced-in play area would be. Here's pictures of the property as it is, as it is today. And, of course, it's eight forty. It's just a closer look at the building where the daycare would be located. And I believe the applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the staff, from the commissioners? Not, uh, we're gonna open this up for a public hearing, make a real quick announcement. Uh, we've got a real heavy agenda tonight, and it is out of desire that we restrain from, uh, lengthy comments and try to, uh, hold your comments to about three minutes. If you represent a group of people who will give you adequate time, uh, if you'll just let us know. Uh, but this will go, uh, hopefully for all of the public hearings that we have tonight. Um, so, I'm gonna open this up for a public hearing. Uh, maybe if the applicant is here, if they'd like to come forward, please?
I'm Trystee Bankston. I request this proposal. I have a, another location, Smyrna Farmable Road. I've had it for five years, and a lot of the parents have asked me to expand, um, out in that location because there isn't enough adequate childcare in Rutherford County, and Rutherford County, as we know, is growing. Um, I have approval with the fire marshal. We do have, um, approval with getting more soil put in for the fill lines for the septic tank. Um, there is enough acres to make a turnaround area, um, and to make adequate parking for the staff as well. Um, we are looking from six fifteen to five forty-five with four employees in the morning and then four employees in the afternoon. Um, we're looking for twenty-four kids. Um, we want to be able to extend our services out to Rutherford County. Um, we've done so well that, um, we would like to go bigger. So, uh, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone here like to speak for or against this request? See no one. We'll close the public hearing. Will?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I've spoken with the applicant previously and also the property owner, I think. Uh, we, this is gonna be a good fit for this building. It's been a commercial building for quite some time already. It sits back off the road, and it is convenient right there to eight forty. So, uh, with that, I'll make a motion to approve contingent upon all staff comments.
I'll second it.
The applicant is Keith Strain, uh, resuming conditional use permit on Last Cassus Pike. The county commissioner, Robert P., decided it's approximately two point zero four acres. Uh, the existing zoning is R fifteen, and the proposed zoning is conditional use permit for retail nursery.
Thank you. The property is located at thirty-six forty-six Last Cassus Pike. Valley Growers, which currently operates a retail nursery at forty-seven ten Last Cassus Pike, is proposing to build and operate a retail nursery garden center at this new location. You should have a, a large copy of the concept plan in front of you. I've got a smaller version of it here for the screen. Uh, you'll see the concept plan shows us about a fourteen hundred square foot sales and office building, plus two greenhouses, a covered wood frame display area. And except for a small plant display area, all, most of the outside storage is located behind the sales office towards the rear of the property. The concept plan does appear to impact the soil area that was identified on the minor plat which created this lot back in two thousand and six. So, if approved, either new soil areas would have to be found, or the buildings may have to be rearranged a little bit at that point. The concept plan does show paved parking area with twenty-one parking spaces, which would meet the minimum parking requirements for retail nursery. Of course, they would have to work with T-DOT to acquire a commercial access permit onto Last Cassus Pike. And since the surrounding area is residential, a type-two buffer yard would be required on, on almost all sides. Now, the Rutherford County Comprehensive Plan shows this portion of Last Cassus Pike as being a suburban corridor, which does allow limited non-residential uses. However, the plan, one of the goal statements in the plan is also to discourage developments which are, would create isolated islands within an established development pattern. And currently, this area is predominantly residential. Uh, just a quick, quick look at the area. Um, this is looking into the property. The, the barn on the property, I think, will be staying. So, you can see it's vacant, vacant now. Uh, we actually have heard from the public quite a bit on this application. Uh, we, this morning, received a petition in opposition to it with approximately seventy signatures, and I went ahead and mapped out geographically where the properties that signed the petition against it were in relation to the proposal. Uh, we've also received a letter in opposition, which should be in front of you. Um, we've seen, received a phone call in opposition, and then we received, uh, one letter and three emails that which were in support of the application. Those are all, should also be in front of you on your desk. And then two calls, two phone calls in support. So, you can see, we've heard quite a bit from the community on this particular, particular application. Uh, the applicant is present, and he does have a short little, uh, photo video he'd like to show, and, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any, uh, any questions for the listeners of the staff?
Chairman, I have a question. I'm, I'm looking at the map, and it looks like there's other conditional use permits and a couple of variances. What are those?
The, directly to the left of the property, or I suppose the southeast, is a property that was given a conditional use permit for a chiropractor's office. Uh, it was, continues to maintain its residential zoning. Everything else, there are a few, uh, home-based businesses scattered around. The variances would be for like setbacks, um, but that's, that's, the chiropractor is the only business, except for about a half a mile to the south at the intersection of Compton Road, you'll start to see more commercial businesses.
If not, we're gonna open up the public hearing. This time, we'd like the applicant to come forward and make, uh, his comments, if you
Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Keith Strain. I represent Susie Trammell and Bob Powell. And Elizabeth, I wanna ask a question. We were told to apply as retail nursery for rezoning change, not, is that the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, I saw the conditional use, and I got a little...
Extra language.
All right, come on up guys. I just wanna make sure I did everything right. I'm gonna let Ms. Susie Trammell talk to you guys for just a minute.
I'm a little nervous, so you have to bear with me. He would pick the busiest night to do this. Uh, my name is Susie Trammell. My husband, Jim Trammell, and I live in Last Cassus. We have two children, Addy Trammell, who is six, and attends Last Cassus Elementary, and Walton, who is four, will attend Last Cassus Elementary in the fall, if they let him in. Um, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Valley Growers' existing business. It's a family business. Um, my father, Bob Powell, runs our parent company in Fentress County on our family farm. It's been in existence since nineteen eighty-four, and he grows the majority of what I sell. Valley Growers was established in two thousand at forty-seven ten Last Cassus Pike. Our twelfth year in business. Um, I feel over those twelve years, we've grown tremendously, not just as a business, but as a part of the community. Um, some ways, we work with the community. We sell a lot of local wares that local artists, um, we have stepping stones, planters, birdhouses, et cetera. We allow local vendors to set up and sell their canned goods, um, produce, baked goods free of charge in the parking lot. We work hand-in-hand with the elementary school in Last Cassus. Um, we donate and advertise for local charities and fundraisers. We work, sponsor, I don't know how many cheerleaders and dance teams and all of that that we have sponsored. Um, another big thing about Last Cassus is we're very knowledgeable staff. Um, I think the biggest thing about Last Cassus is Valley Growers provides a safe, clean, family-friendly environment that the community enjoys coming to. Not just to shop, to socialize, de-stress. Um, I've met so many people since I've been there. Over the last twelve years, I feel like it's a big family. Um, my children have even gained an extra set of grandparents, thanks to Last Cassus. So, why move? Well, we rent at our current location. Um, we've become financially capable to purchase land. It was very important to me to stay in the Last Cassus community. Um, so we saw this piece of land become available. We knew that there was a chiropractic office next to it and a really good barrier, a good tree line on the other side in the back, so we didn't feel disruptive. I thought it would be a perfect fit. It's come to my attention that several people don't agree. I don't understand. But I just want people to know that, you know, my husband and I, we live in Last Cassus. We moved to Last Cassus because we love the community. I grew up in a town, Palma, Tennessee, graduated from eighth grade with six kids, so I understand the small community feel. Um, in Palma, there was a couple of family-owned gas stations, antique stores, a couple places to grab a sandwich. We're that type of business. Um, we wanna be here for the community, not something that takes away from the community. We've been so successful in Last Cassus because of the community. We're currently in a residential area. It wasn't until last year that the, a pharmacy was built beside us, and I've never had any complaints. We're right across from Irving Hills, um, Greystone, Farmington. The only complaint I've gotten from people, my customers, when I'm getting support for us moving, is that we're gonna be farther away from them. So, I'll let Keith and the engineer tell you a little bit more about the new facility. We're trying to blend in, like a barn look, horse barn look, neutral color, wraparound porch, rocking chairs. We're going for that look, so if there's any questions, I will try to answer them.
Thank you. Enik, could you come up here for just a minute and address the draining? We've had a couple of people inquire about draining, and Enik here is from Huddlesham Steel. He's handling our concept plan and also the site plan, assuming that we're able to move forward.
Why not on my end? I'll try to talk louder, is that okay? Um, my name, name's, hey, Mike, Enik Jarrell with Huddlesham Steel Engineering. Um, I put together the concept plan, um, for, uh, for Keith and for Valley Growers. Um, we don't, this is, like I said, at this point's concept, we still have to go through Planning Commission for approval of full site plan. Um, there's about two acre sites. Our current site's maybe an acre or something like that, so they've got more room on this, this site. We've got a couple of detention ponds proposed. Uh, you may have the plan in front of you, the Planning Commission members. Um, the area sort of splits. The back portion of it drains, I'm gonna call, to the east, or sort of towards downtown Last Cassus. Um, there's a pond on the adjacent property, and it drains under the road. We'll have a detention pond on our site as well. Um, and then the, the front portion of the site drains west towards Compton Road, towards Murfreesboro, uh, down. All goes to these four, you know, ultimately, but we will have detention ponds. Uh, T-DOT will require that for the water that drains to the frontage down to the west. And then we have a detention pond at, in the, I guess you'd call that on the east corner back there to, um, to handle the stormwater going on that. So, there won't be any additional stormwater from the site, 'cause we'll have detention ponds to do that. Plus, we'll be able to provide the water quality, 'cause there is existing pond along the road that has, pretty pond, has water this time of year. It dries up in the fall sometimes, but, um, that's the general drainage scheme. There's, behind us is Brandywine subdivision. There's about, portion of about three lots that drain to this property, and we'll be able to handle that water as well. Most of it really runs around, around this property from, from the Brandywine in the Mr. Vought, I will speak louder, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm not sure the mic's working.
We'll just open up some questions, if you have any.
Mr. Chairman, I've heard it working either. Uh, based on comment more, what the question to the, to the owner, uh, we, years ago... The new folks, and, uh, what helped it was they lived on the property. They were living in the house where they were gonna be doing the business of the chiropractic business. That's what helped that situation. But, I've been to your establishment down there, and, and it's, it's awesome. I mean, it's a great place. I know you're gonna keep it well-maintained and, and have a thriving business here. There's, there's one major problem. This is a developed residential area, which is different. And you're really located into some commercial little businesses right there and close to you. And so, it really should be commercial, really. Uh, but this, this location right here, the toughest part to grasp is in and out of noise, in and out with, with, you know, plants and shrubs and everything else that you're gonna be doing. And I think that's what has a lot of folks stirred up in this petition, as well as living there because they, they put their investment into their home, and that's where they wanna be by themselves, so to speak, or, or live and, and be comfortable without any additional noise, or any additional traffic, or any additional dust, or any additional sound, or anything like that. And that's, that's the, that's the problem, I think, in this location.
And I understand. I mean, I wouldn't have concerns if somebody was building something beside me. But where I am now, I mean, there was nothing, you know, the pharmacy was a house.
Right.
Where a man lives, so there's not any more commercial. I don't think where I am now, you know, Mr. Jordan's up the road, and Ninety-Six Market's just as close as Smokey's. I guess you're saying I'm closer to downtown, Last Cassus.
Well, I think you're, you're more into, um, the developed residential.
And I, I wish I could say the noise wouldn't bother people and that kind of thing, but, I mean, there's people that live that...
Talked about, and we discussed this early, was the, the fact that we feel like we were gonna, would improve the site far as the looks, number one. And ninety-eight percent of Valley, Valley Growers' business is April and May. I'm not gonna say that they're dormant after that until then, but April and May would be the busier times. The rest of the time, I mean, Christmas time, yeah, they're gonna sell some pond settings and some Christmas trees, but April and May is where we feel like most people would be affected, whether it's a, a truck pulling in or something like that. It's not a constant year-round business, you know, with very reasonable hours, I think, eight to, depending on the season.
Um, what type of vehicles will be entering and exiting off of this particular site?
Majority of the vehicles, obviously, will be consumer vehicles, but there will also be, uh, larger trucks that would deliver plants, the shrubs, things of that nature.
Possibly a box truck.
Box truck, box truck. Twenty-four, twenty-six foot box truck. Um, if we ever get into, if Valley Growers ever get into something different, like doing mulch or dirt or anything like that, then obviously you'll have possibly your landscaper who has purchased some mulch to come in with, say, a fourteen-foot trailer behind his pickup truck, load the mulch, and take it out to his client's home.
But all of this would be between the business hours, nothing after?
Absolutely. In the business hours.
Nothing after.
Is he's working out? Yeah. Basically, we just kinda wanna show, uh, pictures and looks of the existing businesses that, uh, Mr. Powell and Ms. Trammell have at this time. Obviously, they do business over at the co-op, uh, that's been over just the past couple of years. The longest term has been there at Valley Growers in Last Cassus. Also, uh, we were late in getting some pictures of kind of a concept of what we want the building to look like. Is that in Jamestown?
No, it's in Lenore City.
In Lenore City, Tennessee. I have pictures if anybody would like to see. It's not exactly what we're looking at, but it's the closest thing we could find without going on to mortonbuildings.com or something like that.
That's our garden center in Lenore City.
Mr. Powell, I'd like to ask him up here. I know you asked for us to be very brief, and we'll finish this up at this point.
Just, this is my daughter, if you can't tell, that we would be, that's who, we, we would be buying the property, um, between us. We started our business from scratch in nineteen eighty-four. We're a family business. This is our fourth garden center. The one in Lenore City, for the last three years, has been runner-up for the best, for the Knoxville News Sentinel does a Best in East Tennessee contest, uh, for the last, we won it last year and the three, three years before that. So, we're very community-involved. We want it to look good. Susie spends too much time making it look good. We grow the plants, uh, we, we're the ones that deliver them. Most of that, uh, comes in sixteen-foot trucks. Uh, we're, we're basically a wholesale operation supplying our garden centers, so I wanted to mention that about the Lenore City. That's the kind of garden center we're looking for.
Also, we look forward to addressing any type of, um, questions, anything that somebody, uh, may be uncomfortable with. Uh, we'll do our best to answer here tonight. Thank you.
Public hearing is now open for anyone who would like to speak for or against this
Good evening. I'm Dan Clayton. I live at thirty-seven thirty-six Idlewood Drive in Brandywood, which is the development behind the proposed, uh, business. My wife and I, Wendy, and our son Daniel, moved there a little bit over eleven years ago because of the seclusion from any type of commercial development, because it was a beautiful neighborhood, because we were close to enough to town within five miles to go to a nursery, to a Walmart, or anywhere like that. We chose that because we felt that that part of town was never gonna go up. I applaud them for opening a business and having their fourth location somewhere. I just don't want their fourth location to be right outside where I live and drive by every day. Twenty-two parking spaces. You know, there was a daycare before proposed that was gonna have, I think, eight parking spaces for twenty-four children. Twenty-two parking spaces must mean they're gonna expect a great deal of traffic and trade. I don't know, I've never owned a nursery. All I know is that there's a lot other places in this county that's more rural or closer to a more built-up industrialized area that they could put this. I'm just asking the committee not to allow it. Thank you.
My name is Joe Powell. I own the property adjacent to, um, the, uh, little square cut out there. There's a, another, uh, house there, but I own the one that's on the total end, lying at it. And, uh, I have the pond, and your, uh, fellow said that, uh, they were gonna have a retention pond there. Well, I have a retention pond, and it runs over all the time. I know you've come by there, seen it running over. All of the water that comes off this property right now runs down on my property and into the, the, uh, Wet Weather Creek and on down into my pond. That's what, it keeps it full when it's full. And, uh, well, they're having mulch and all the other chemicals that they're gonna have around. What gets spilled is going to run down on me. There's no way for the water to run other than down into that creek. It's got to come across part of my property into that creek. We have 70 names on this petition and they're all in front of it on both sides where you see all the yellow. These people are against it. This is a residential section. We've taken a big enough hit on the economy on our property and we don't need it run down more by commercial property being in there. You know, I, I have nothing against these people. I bought product from them, but I'm asking the board to turn this down.
Powell?
I'm Lonnie McMillan. I live at 3743 Idlewood in Brandywood behind the, uh, proposed nursery. The traffic already in the morning backs up a good half mile from Compton back past their property now. In the evenings, it's very busy coming right by there again. To say that our neighborhood is similar to where they're at in residential now is a real stretch. Also, I'm a little confused as they mentioned if they in the future sell dirt and mulch. They already do that now. I didn't see when they put the picture up, the big 45-foot dry van. It's a big commercial, um, trailer that sits on the property. Like to know what's going to become of that. So I'm very opposed to it and ask you to vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
My name is Bruce Hickerson and I live next door to Joe Powell, the one that just spoke a minute ago. And, uh, this guy told me one time that, uh, he was from Las Cassas and I was not. He said, "You cannot consider yourself a, a Lascassian unless you're born on the north side of that bridge." And so I have, have to admit, I'm on the wrong side of the bridge. And in this particular case, I would be on the wrong side of, uh, the nursery as well because I could give you the same oval argument. Everybody uses traffic and, uh, other excuses, but my personal opinion is this is not an item that we need in this area. It doesn't fit the subdivision theme that we have out there and, uh, I'm very strongly opposed to it. We have been, my wife and I, especially my wife, has been a very good customer of Valley Growers for several years now and I wish them well and every respect, but I have to say in all honesty, not in our neighborhood at the present time. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for or against this proposal?
It wasn't mentioned, but I assumed that since this is going to be commercial property...
Please state your name and address.
Okay, the name is Rocco Sumeri and I'm, I'm speaking for, uh, Mr. Starkey. He's the chiropractor that's next door. He wasn't able to attend, so he wanted me to...
Did you say your name was?
Rocco Sumeri. The question is, is that, uh, since it's going to be commercial, that there'll probably be security lighting on all night and this is all residential area. So you're going to have some kind of floodlights or security lights on that's going to be on all night, which would be a problem for residential areas. And also the chiropractor office, even though it's zoned, it's, it's got a temporary commercial zoning, he can't sell this commercial property because once he closes his business, it reverts back to residential. So, and he was also told that if, if he was given this temporary zoning for his chiropractic office, that he had to keep it as residential-looking as possible. He couldn't make any commercial-looking changes to it. He's had to leave it as a, as a commercial, or a, a home look and couldn't make anything would look commercial. So he had to keep it looking like the rest of the neighborhood. So he wanted to express that.
Thank you, Mr. Sumeri. Anyone else?
I leased the property I'm on now and the mulch and the topsoil are not mine. So that's, that's who I lease from and the straw trailer is not mine. So that would not be following us to the new location. If that makes anybody feel a little bit better about that situation. And we don't have security lights where we are now. We wouldn't plan on having security lights where we move to.
Will it be the same setup like the Co-op? Okay.
Different than the Co-op. It's more family-oriented. We have a fish pond with fish. You know, it's, the Co-op's a place that we leased. It was already in existence. We love it. 14 greenhouses, heated. We grow stuff there, but we're not going for that kind of, that's more a in-town box store look and we're going more for, to fit into the residential neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to close the public hearing. Anyone else? The public hearing is closed. We're now open for business. Will?
I would ask staff if they've heard from either one of the county commissioners because the dividing line is there. I know it's Commissioner Black across the street and Commissioner P there. Uh, I've had a conversation today with Commissioner Black, but I was just wondering if, uh, if, if you all had a recommendation from, from officially?
Well, I spoke with Commissioner P. I guess it would have been, is he here? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner P is present, so I guess I won't speak for him.
We recognize Commissioner P.
There was a pretty good crowd. I didn't know, I didn't know if either, either one of the commissioners were here.
Commissioner Robert P.
When I was approached with this, I tell the applicant, the same thing I tell everybody, is talk to your neighbors and see what the neighborhood likes or wants over there and listen to them and usually don't go wrong with that. This lady, uh, our, our applicant here has got a good business, uh, they're good people. Uh, they like, they're liked in the community. I don't think there's anybody here got any kind of animosity. You know, it's evident to me, uh, tonight after listening to several of the folks here that most of the people in the community here are not for this. The problem that I have a lot of times is people are told things that aren't true and they have misconceptions and I don't want that to happen to this lady. She doesn't deserve it. Now, the main thing that I see, uh, happening here is people don't want a residential neighborhood having people driving in and out for retail use. That's, that's the problem that I see, the main thing. I actually had spoke to Will here a week or two ago and I had not had any calls against this at all until Friday night, I think it was. At any rate, I said, "Well, it sounds like people over there are okay with this" and that's, you know, kind of what indication I was. And then I got a, a call and then I got another call and then I got another call and then I was told about a petition, which I haven't seen yet. You know, and I, like I said, the people that have called me, main thing that I want to make sure that they do, because this is a good person, a good applicant, make sure you got your facts straight. If it's just traffic, I understand that, but a lot of things get blown out of proportion. You know, I'd like to think that we can work something out and bring this business in and let her expand because Lord knows we need more jobs and things like that. However, you know, I've told the applicant, uh, Mr. Starkey, that I go along with what our people in the community want. That's why I was here basically tonight to try to learn this. From what I've seen, I, this comes to the commission as it is with the people in that area not changing their mind. I would have to recommend denial because the people in that area don't want it. Now, what I'm hoping is the people in that area, if you've got concerns, for instance, the trailer that she addressed, the mulch, and, uh, I'd actually spoke to Mr. Powell about that and I understand worrying about the water coming down, uh, possibly those would be things that could be addressed, you know, buffering along the highway, that kind of thing. What I'd like to think, uh, as I said, I would recommend denial, but if you folks out here that are against this, if it's something that you've heard, I'd like for you to call me and, you know, I'll leave my number here and actually it's on the webpages and everything else, so, I mean, you can get ahold of me. But this lady would accommodate you any way that she could to be able to make this work for you. And that's, I hate to see a good person be turned down for reasons that somebody heard something. You know, make sure you got your facts straight on things like that. Like I said, if it's just, if it's the traffic thing, which I know the folks over there on Idlewood, uh, and I understand that's a beautiful subdivision. I built a few of the homes over there, as a matter of fact, but, and, and it's grown a bit since then, but it is beautiful, quiet neighborhood. There is a lot of traffic on 96, there's no doubt about that, but this is a person that would love to be a good neighbor for you. And hopefully that'll answer y'all's questions. Anybody got any before I step down?
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner P. If I'm not mistaken, we've got four emails in support. One letter with a number of names signed in, in opposition. I heard it, heard the number 70. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I regretfully have to make this motion, but I make a motion to deny due to, uh, traffic, drainage and, uh, basically just plain, uh, commercial business in a residential area. I hope that these folks, Key Strain them, whoever can find them a location, because this is a great business and I think a great family and we, we certainly don't want to lose them out of Rutherford County. I just think maybe this is the wrong location.
Do we have a motion to deny? Do we have a second?
I'll second it because I remember three or four years ago when we did the chiropractor's office, we were very exact about how we were uncomfortable with it being a commercial business in a residential area and did approve it with a temporary conditional use permit that lapsed upon sale of the property. Exactly as the gentleman said, was to be no changes to the house to make it look like anything besides the house and, you know, and, and, and they lived there and, uh, and this is just, it's just a step beyond that, you know, and, uh, so...
Have a motion to deny and a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, let the record reflect that I will, will not vote because of a possible conflict.
Thank you, Mike. Any other discussion? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my question really would be directed towards, uh, Mr. Gerald on the drainage issue. Can I ask him a question?
Uh, yes, it's, it's just fine. If you'd come back up.
Based on the, the neighbor's comments on, on the wet creek and his pond down on the front of his property, I'm assuming that the detention ponds that you have designed would either help alleviate that or certainly not put any additional water on the neighbor's property. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir. It wouldn't alleviate it, but it, but it wouldn't put any additional water. And maybe Elizabeth, the, the aerial, I'm not sure who had the, uh, the map, but maybe I can show you the aerial. Um, the pond is right here that, that Mr. Joe, I forget his last name, Powell has. It's his property, beautiful house here, but a, a lot of his water comes from the subdivision. There's a ditch right down through here between a couple of driveways. A little bit of the water from these houses drain onto this site, really drains around. There's sort of a ditch through this tree line. There's very little of, you know, this is a two-acre site, so about an acre drains this way. We'll have a detention area here and then the other drains back down towards town. So, you know, we, we won't be, um, adding any, you know, additional water to, uh, to those areas. We won't help his, you know, I don't, I don't know that, I guess that pond and a big flood may overflow and run down the ditch. That's what it's supposed to do, but, but I don't, we won't be leaving anything, but, but we won't make it any worse.
Okay.
Any other discussion? The motion is to deny. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Call the row.
Rhonda Allen. Richie Boland. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Pettis Reed. Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught. I'm sorry. And Jeff Phillips. We have five noes and four yeses.
Motion. Motion fails? Say five yes.
Sorry, four yes, five noes, one pass.
Motion. We have five yeses.
We have four yeses, five noes, one pass.
Well, the motion carries.
No.
All right. The motion to deny carries.
Mr. Chairman, the motion to deny fails, so you'll have to have a positive motion for approval.
Isn't that what I just said? Did the motion fail? Okay. The motion fails. Okay. We have a motion to approve. Now we have a second to the motion to approve and discussion on that. Pettis?
Mr. Chairman, has there been any discussion between the, uh, people, uh, that are wanting to make this, uh, property change with the people there? You know, a lot of times we have asked that they get together on this. Has there been a community meeting as such? A community meeting as such?
No, not that we know of. No.
Can we make this request? Can, can we make, make the motion to defer it for 30 days to see if there can be?
We could, but we have a motion and a second on the floor at this time.
I'd like to amend that motion if we could to give a 30-days deferral here, uh, to allow individuals to, uh, to call a, uh, community meeting there and discuss this with the individuals, see if they can work this out.
Chairman, if I may, I think the proper course of action for what you're proposing, Mr. Reed, would be rather than amend the motion, uh, would be for those who made the motion and seconded it to withdraw their motion and then make that as a separate motion. I think that'd be the, the proper way to do that.
Josh, is that right? Okay. So the, the motion to amend the original motion, uh, is out of order. Any other discussion? Question has been called for. Call the row. What we're voting for, okay, is to approve, not to deny.
Rhonda Allen. Richie Boland. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Pettis Reed. Steve Sandlin. Jeff Phillips. We have five noes and four yeses and one pass.
Mr. Chairman, I make my motion that the individuals have a community meeting with the community there and discuss this matter to see if we can bring it back in thirty days.
I have a motion and a second. Before we get into that, let me just say that we've had a motion to deny, and that was approved. That failed. We've had a motion to approve, and that failed. Okay. I don't know where to go from here, you guys. I'm kind of lost. And now we've got a motion to defer for thirty days and ask that the applicant have a community meeting and meet with all of those, and this would come back before this commission a month from, well, in May.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that motion, Mr. Reed. What you've got is a great business, folks, out there in a great community, and just about every one of these folks that spoke have done business there, and like I said, there's no animosity on these folks, it's just the location itself. So, I think this would be a great middle ground to get them together, work out their differences, or either come to a conclusion that they're going to work it out or not. And then if they don't or can't, then maybe they have to find another location. But you take a great business group of folks, family, and in a good area with residential built up there, maybe they can work it out and come back and make our jobs easier then.
Please do, Robert. While Commissioner P is coming up, I'd like to ask our counsel, would one of these motions in effect be a denial?
Of the two motions that were made, and no.
So, where would we go from here?
You would have to keep, someone would need to continue to make a motion until you got an affirmative vote on whatever motion is made.
Thank you.
Well, we actually, one of the discussions I had was to have a community meeting. The first two people that called me said they weren't interested in having a meeting. I think Mr. Strang has gone around in the community some, I don't think he's talked to everybody, but I would be more than happy to have a meeting if you're interested. Now, the people that are against this, can I see a show of hands of who would like to have a meeting? All right, I see one hand, two, three, okay. Okay. I mean, are y'all interested in having a meeting? I mean, if we're beating a dead horse, you know, I'm not into that either, we'll let these people grind out what they're going to do. But that's kind of what I thought. We'd, I'd actually asked about this beforehand to see if there was some interest in the community there of having a meeting, and it didn't look like there was to me, and that's why I didn't pursue it at that time, so, guys, I like to, good luck.
Any additional comments?
I've got a question for Doug. I know we're on like subdivisions and all, one of the rezoning requests, we have so many days to act. Is that, does the applicant have to be agreeable to this, or do we, are we bound to give them an answer in X number of days?
For zonings like this, we have a little more leeway with that, so, I mean, this wouldn't be the first time an application's been deferred for a community meeting or something to that effect, so I don't think you have anything to worry about there.
And besides that, there sounds like, as Commissioner P spoke earlier, there's a lot of misinformation. Somebody mentioned topsoil and mulch. The lady said they weren't going to be doing topsoil and mulch and a trailer and different things, and looks like some of these, you know, they could have some communication and maybe put some people at ease one way or the other.
Motion to defer for thirty days, giving the community time to discuss the request. Any other discussion? Okay, let's call the roll on that, please. We're voting to defer this rezoning for thirty days until our May sixth, May meeting, six p.m. meeting, to allow the community to meet and discuss this rezoning and then come back with this same request in May. Is that pretty much it? Thank you, Will. May fourteenth. That's correct. Any other discussion? Call the roll, Gail.
Rhonda Allen.
Sounds to me like the people who are for it are for it, and the ones who are against it are going to be against it, so for that simple statement there from what we've seen tonight, I'm voting no to defer.
Richie Bolan. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Pettis Reed. Steve Sandlin. Jeff Phillips. Five noes, four yeses, one pass.
Mike, did you have something? Sorry.
The tie.
Motion fails.
May I ask a clarification question?
Yes, please do, Mike.
Am I understanding that the chiropractic service next door has a temporary zoning approval to act as a business, and when the property is sold or that business closes, then it reverts back to residential?
The property that you're referring to, it's currently zoned R-15. When that property was brought in for the zoning hearing, the planning commission made the recommendation, which was ultimately approved by the county commission, to just approve a conditional use permit on the property. So, it's still, there's not, it's not like there's a temporary commercial zoning. It is zoned R-15 with that conditional use permit.
So, why couldn't we mirror that same logic in this case?
I'm sorry, Mr. Rush, what?
Why couldn't we use that same logic on this parcel of property?
That's something that, since I've become director, that I've really tried to discourage. I mean, when you take a piece of property that's residentially zoned, you approve a conditional use permit that's non-residential, you're essentially rezoning the property anyway. It makes more sense to zone the property that way than just say, well, we'll just call it a conditional use permit, and upon lapse, which this chiropractor was done with, upon lapse of the, or sale of property, excuse me, the conditional use permit lapses, I mean, the property is still being used in a commercial manner. It just makes better sense from a planning standpoint to call it what it is commercially zoned.
We've done a lot of that in the past, if those of us that have been around a long time remember, we've kind of gotten away from that. One of the conditions that we've always used, Mike, was that it was a home-based business and the person lived on site before we would consider a conditional use permit. Is that right?
Well, generally speaking, yes. Now, I will say with that chiropractor, he did not live on site, and as far as I know, never lived there. He lives right next door to the property, at least at the time he did when this came through. That wasn't a requirement that he remained living there or anything, but I just, so y'all will understand that when that was approved, he was not planning on living there and, to my knowledge, never has, so...
For clarification purposes, and I don't think this has been pointed out, the chiropractor's house, you can see it on the map up there, and there is another residential lot, if I'm not mistaken, between the property in question and the chiropractor.
Yes, that's correct.
I need a motion.
I've got a question. You're not supposed to be able to make the same motion that's already been thrown out before, I don't believe. We've already had a motion to approve, a motion to defer, and a motion to deny. They've all failed. Can't we even have another motion without doing the exact same motion we just had?
I think if there's further deliberation, that another motion can be made from the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I think I'm the one that's caused some of this confusion here, and I thought tonight the biggest problem was going to be dealing with zoning, but evidently the two parties are not, we just can't really, my hopes was that we could make some discussion, and if there was some misconceptions given, that some people had misunderstandings, which I seem to think there was, evidently there's not, and you're needing a motion, I make the motion to deny.
Have a motion to deny and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just for clarification too, for the audience, if we deny it, they can still take it to the county commission, correct?
It will still go before the county commission with the planning commission's recommendation to deny. The county commission will carry the decision whether or not to rezone that property.
I have a question, and then if this motion fails, Josh, could we make a motion to send it forward to the county commission without a recommendation?
That's a good question. The ordinance says that the planning commission has to consider it and pass it forward with approval, denial, or suggestions, so that term suggestions is undefined in the zoning ordinance, and I believe that appears in state law as well. So, I suspect that you could send it forward with some type of neutral, you know, comment, commentary attached to it.
We have a motion to deny, and I believe we had a second? Okay. Any other discussion? This motion is to deny.
Gail, I won't vote because of a possible...
Rhonda Allen. Richie Bolan. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Pettis Reed. Steve Sandlin. Jeff Phillips. Five yeses, four noes, one pass. It fails.
No, but that passed. That passed.
Okay.
I think the motion, I think the motion carries. Gail, it's you and me, we're not kind of, tonight. I think the motion carries, so that means that the motion that will go before the county commission will be to deny, and the county commission will hear this at a public hearing on May the twentieth, I think it is, May the twentieth, Thursday, May the twentieth at six p.m.
May the seventeenth, Mr. Chairman, sir.
I'm sorry, you're right. May the seventeenth, Thursday, May the seventeenth. Thank you. Thank you for all of your attendance and all of your input. We haven't had one like this in months. The next item on our agenda is the new zoning resolution and map. Before we get into a public hearing on this, we're going to open it up for some staff comments, and Doug, if you would, just kind of bring us up to date, introduce those that are here that have helped us, helped this commission with the ordinance, so if you would, just kind of take over and we'll go from there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just as a way of review for the planning commission, those in the audience and those who may be watching at home, of course, this is part of an ongoing process that we began about three years ago. It started with the comprehensive plan. After the plan was adopted April of last year, the next phase of that project was to go ahead and begin working on our sub, excuse me, our zoning ordinance and map, also our subdivision regulations. The zoning ordinance itself was originally, the last one was adopted back in 1984, so it's fairly old, and we know it's out of date and needed to be updated. There's been a number of community meetings that we've had during this entire process, plenty of opportunities for public input, and this is another opportunity tonight. Over the last few months, we had a public hearing on this draft document and map. We had that back in December of 2011, December the twelfth. Since that time, we've had three work sessions. We had one on January twenty-third of this year, then we had one on March, excuse me, February the thirteenth, and then we had one on March the twelfth. We discussed a number of comments that we received. You'll recall that the planning commission asked us to take, put a, something on our website, basically a comment form, if you will, to start getting comments to us. We received a number of comments for, with that particular method. As far as we can tell, as best as we can tell, we've tried to respond to every comment that we received. There, I think there was, there's a certain amount of maybe unclarity as to what we are trying to do with that, and we tried to take care of that with the responses that we gave with those questions and the responses we gave to those. On your desk tonight, you'll see that there is about an eight, seven and a half, eight-page document of the different changes that we've made to the draft, which the last draft was November the fourteenth of 2011. I won't go into those unless you just have particular questions, but you'll see, we've done it by chapter, just to give you an idea of the changes we have made, so we have been listening to the comments we have been receiving, we have been making changes as we've been going. The, our, part of our consultant team is here tonight. We have Ms. Michelle Kendall with the Parsons Brinkerhoff team. She acted as the assistant project manager. We also have Mr. Bill Terry with us tonight from Bill Terry and Associates. He's been the one that's really been the most instrumental with the zoning aspect of this. You'll recall at our last meeting, we discussed a number of items. One of the items that we did discuss at some length had to do with the rock quarry zoning. You'll recall that we received a, some correspondence from the Hoover Corporation over, they have a one quarry on Twin Oak Drive, and we discussed the zoning of that property. You'll recall that the original draft showed all the different quarries being zoned industrial. After discussion, we went ahead and proposed that they be zoned for residential use. However, with the situation with the Hoover quarry on Twin Oak Drive, that one was predominantly already zoned for industrial use, and after discussion, the planning commission instructed us to go ahead and to, if they already had it, to keep them in the industrial zoning, so we have made that change to the map. So, that's really the biggest change to the map that we have made to this point. With that, I don't have just a whole lot of other comments unless you just have specific questions to ask. We're here just to continue gathering input, to hear what the people have to say and to respond to any comments that we do receive. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, just kind of follow up with that and tell us what we have already approved and what we have yet to do.
Well, at this point, you're talking in regards to the zoning, I believe, okay. At this point, the summary of changes that we put before you, those are the changes that throughout this process, we've been bringing to you and getting your input, and these are the changes that seem to, the ones that you wanted us to make, so we have done that. At this point, really, we're here again just to gather more input. You have the ability at this point to make a recommendation to the board of commissioners tonight. You know, at the last public hearing, you know, you had mentioned that you would not make any kind of recommendation until another public hearing was done, so this is that second public hearing. Again, if more discussion is needed, then this can always be deferred. We're not in any timeframe with this. So, basically, your options tonight would, you can make a recommendation on this, or you can defer it for more study. I know that there's been a lot of discussion about the one unit an acre area that we have in the, I guess, the more rural parts of the community. I know there's been a lot of discussion on that, I'm sure there will be some more tonight. You know what our recommendation is. Ultimately, it's going to be up to you, what you decide to recommend to the county commission, and then it'll be up to the county commission at that point to make a decision.
Staff comments? Any questions or comments by the planning commission? Not, we're going to open up our public hearing. We will give everyone ample opportunity. If you would, please limit your comments to three minutes if you can. If you're representing a group, let us know, and we'll give you pretty much leeway to have as much time as you need to make your presentation. Okay? So, I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wish to make a comment? Come forward, state your name and your address, please. Come forward, state your name and your address, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission, my name is Charlie Montgomery, and I'm the president of the Milton Tennessee Association of Realtors. I grew up in a red, real estate family. I've been licensed as a real estate agent and auctioneer for over a quarter of a century and proudly worked for the firm that bears my father's name. I've invested my life in working with the people of this area and the property and investments that cherish, which is why the Realtors have seen fit to ask me to speak on their behalf tonight. The proposed zoning ordinance is, for the most part, a good document, a fine plan attempting to implement the vision that Rutherford County has created for its future. Milton Tennessee Association of Realtor members and staff were present at the community meeting with Parsons Brinkhoff and the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. The steering committee itself included members of Milton Tennessee Association of Realtors, as does the planning commission. However, the association strongly opposes this decision to rezone portions of the county as low-density residential, or RL, without individual consent of the affected property owners for the better part of three decades. The residents of Rutherford County have abided by the zoning ordinance which allows three homes per acre lot if land will sustain it. Families have relocated here and entrepreneurs have invested here based on that right given to them by the local authority. Efforts to ensure sustainability through now attempting to downzone fringe areas of the county are misguided. If property owners are to be allowed to petition for a rezoning to medium-density residential, or RM, then the land should simply be zoned RM in the first place. With substantiality being the keystone of the argument behind rezoning, then the right and property, proper actions would be for the Rutherford County Zoning Commission to increase the requirements for proof of sustainability and put the onus on county staff to step up their codes, enforcement under existing property rights supported by changes in the land over time. Rather than to preference your argument that the citizens of the county have had a right to do something with their land, and that right should now be taken away. This proposed zoning ordinance will have a negative effect on the county's economy that is farther reaching than intended. If massive amounts of land are rezoned from R-15 to RL, then the affected lands will be less valuable by default. If that were to become the case, the affected residents would have a right and incentive to have their properties reappraised at a lower value. This reappraisal would logically lead to a significant decrease in property tax revenue for the county from the affected residents, a loss of income which is not offset elsewhere in zoning ordinance. This is an economic impact which Rutherford County cannot afford to face, and it could lead to a lessened quality of service from the county government and a decreased quality of life for its residents. Ultimately, the comprehensive plan is about improving quality of life here, and the ripple effects of this one, this one piece of the proposed ordinance undermine the entire purpose of it is meant to serve. The Realtor community of Rutherford County asks that you reconsider this aspect of the proposal and potentially make it voluntarily but not obligatory. If various residents wish to downzone their properties, then that is their privilege to do so, but requiring it without their consent and without careful consideration of the possible economic repercussions would be a tragic mistake that our association cannot support. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Good evening. My name is Chris Jensen. I live at 2515 Lancoya Drive, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. And I am here tonight to represent the Rutherford County Home Builders Association. Many hours have been spent looking over this, the different aspects of this new zoning ordinance, and we can see the amount of time and care that has been placed on this proposal, as well as some of the issues that it might fix. However, we are still concerned about a few key items within the proposal, which we fear will result in more harm than good. We agree that an ordinance is needed, but that this ordinance creates some new challenges. We feel that new construction, growth, and economic development drive America. Yet, looking at this proposed ordinance, we do see some things that will increase restrictions, devalue land, and create an environment for unworkable developments. The need for zoning ordinance should not be to make it harder to develop land, but rather to make sure that it is done the proper way. Two of the major items that we see within this proposed ordinance that will, in our eyes, cause stunted or unhealthy economic growth are, first, the rezoning of half the county to one unit per acre, and, second, requiring an arbitrary 20% of the land within a PUD to be set aside. According to local developers that do not currently develop outside city limits, in order to encourage quality development, the county must be able to provide a process that is easy to work with, understand, and which allows and promotes creativity, allow densities and variety that make quality development economically feasible. The projects must also be able to be marketable or desirable to the consumer, and efficient use of land and resources that include minimizing the long-term maintenance costs. We feel what will occur under the proposed ordinance is that it will make it even more difficult to work with, even less density will be allowed, and even more land will be required to be maintained. This will drive economic prosperity, growth, and development away from our county. When it comes to rezoning half the county, we are simply removing options and limiting ourselves as a prosperous county. Just because a parcel is zoned RS-15 does not mean that you could actually obtain a full three-home-per-acre density. Soil conditions, road access, desirability, or one of many other factors could result in a decreased density of a potential development. However, if the conditions were perfect for a three-unit-per-acre development, short of the fact that it had been rezoned, then you have just cut off the potential for affordable and desirable housing that is needed to facilitate the growth of our county. Larger lots will also mean bigger prices, which generally means bigger houses that are less affordable to the general public. 20% of a potential development requiring to be set aside is a huge portion of land that will make most of any county project not viable. When you take 15 or 30% of the land for your initial, from your initial land for a step system, and then take an additional 20% for green space, you have taken a potential 44% of your starting land out of your potential lot space from the start. Then, taking land for roads, you are left with potentially half of the land that you started with and paid for to supposedly turn a profit? This is not a viable plan. Because of what I have mentioned this evening, among other issues, the Rutherford County Home Builders Association feels that the zoning ordinance leans too much towards anti-growth than is desirable for a healthy, growing economy. We also feel that this is not in line with other parts of our county's goals. As is seen in the publication from the Rutherford County's Destination Rutherford 2015 Plan, quote, "Destination Rutherford 2015's purpose is to stimulate economic prosperity and create jobs. To achieve this objective, we have embarked on aggressive five-year program to invest $4 million and realize significant economic gains in Rutherford County. This will include more than 5,000 new jobs and create nearly $316 million in new disposable personal income." From the outside looking in, it looks to me like we are wanting to draw companies in, stimulate economic growth, actually spending money in order to try to do this, but we don't want to provide an affordable place for these people who, for these new jobs, an affordable place for them to live unless they live within city limits. As it is now, developments in the county are limited to the adventurous few or the farmers that just split their property up on their own. And with this ordinance, we will just make it harder for growth in the county rather than to encourage proper development and direct it in the desirable way. I would like to thank each of you for the time that you give to our community, and I ask that you take our words into consideration. Let us be creative and let us encourage development, not stifle it.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
My name is Chip Montgomery. I'm honored to be the brother of Charlie Montgomery and Carl Montgomery. They've done a great job in taking over my dad's business. I reside at 2042 Deerwood Avenue here in Murfreesboro. You know, we hear these concepts and ideas of green this, green that. I'm just a, I'm not as sophisticated in the real estate business as my brothers. I'm a physical therapist. I do know enough that this possibly could be a filter-down agenda from an international standpoint. We all have heard the term Agenda 21. So we are concerned about what is happening in our community that's being imposed upon us by people not of this country. So y'all's job as our representatives is to stop governmental intrusion, whatever it's called, green this, green that, Agenda 21, or whatever, and help us to be Americans and stay American and stay free. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Mr. Chairman, members of planning commission, interested citizens, excuse me, I'm here tonight to encourage you to approve the proposed zoning ordinance that you have been studying. I don't base my assumptions on anybody's development rights or anything else, but I base it on water supply issues. And most people don't realize they're critical in this, in this county. I have some, handed out some slides that you can see on the screen, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the first one. If you will flip to the second one, you will see all of the intakes that draw water out of the Cumberland River Drainage Basin. Percy Priest Lake is a part of the Cumberland River Drainage Basin controlled by the Corps of Engineers. Now, I'm going to flip to the next, the last page. And if you will notice, J. Percy Priest is the third smallest drainage basin in the Cumberland River Drainage Basin. It's 800 and, I can't read that number, 892 square miles. Rutherford County itself is about 640 square miles. There is a part of Rutherford County that does not drain into the Cumberland River Drainage Basin. It goes into the Harpeth River. So all of Rutherford County does not drain into the Percy Priest Drainage Basin. We all know that in 2008, Percy Priest Lake lacked a foot reaching summer pool. I am told that in that summer pool, there are approximately 4.56 million gallons, billion gallons of water in one foot of water in Percy Priest Lake. That sounds like a lot of water. But on a yearly consumption, the contract that CUD has with Percy Priest Lake is for 16 million gallons a day. If my math is correct, 16 million gallons a day almost is as much water as in that one foot of Percy Priest Lake that we did not have in 2008. The Corps also estimates that they lost 97 million gallons of water to evaporation during that hot summer. My fear is, well, simple this, that one foot of water was critical. It doesn't make any difference if it's a lack of inflow from the drainage or rain or whatever, or increased consumption uses that foot of water. It's gone. There is no way, I used to always think that we could augment Percy Priest Lake by going to the Cumberland River here at, in Wilson County or down below the dam and pump water back over the dam. I don't think that will be possible. Lagarto Utility District in Wilson County attempted to come up with a draw contract from Percy Priest Lake, and I don't know what the volume was, it was small, but that, that contract was denied by Percy Priest Lake, by the Corps of Engineers. I don't see much way to supplement the water supply in Percy Priest Lake for Rutherford County. Center Hill might be the other option, but if the Corps doesn't repair the Center Hill Dam back to its original capacity, it will not have its original storage design capacity. It won't be there. When God created this earth, he created the drainage basins we have, and I believe that was long before any proposition by the United Nations ever took place. This is what we have. This is the water we have. If you could go back to your original slide from the county? Yeah. It makes more sense to have a plan such as this and let development take place on a contiguous basis, rather than permitting development way out here somewhere, run out of water, and then want to develop this and the water not be there. It doesn't make sense, folks. It doesn't make sense. There's an old saying, "A failure to plan is a plan to fail." I think this is a good plan, and I would encourage you to do everything you can to support it. I thank you for your time. Oh, I'm sorry. Larry McElroy. I'm general manager at Consolidated Utility District. Myself.
I'm sorry, no questions, no questions from the audience. Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Hello?
I wanted to follow him because I came a year ago, January. My name is Pat Sanders. I live on Armstrong Valley Road, southwest of here, and when I came and talked about water, that point that the Mr. McElroy, is that his name, mentioned, one of you two, or someone, very astute commissioner sitting back there, mentioned the Percy Priest Lake thing. Might have been one of you two. It was someone sitting over there, and I'll never forget it because the 2008 thing, I didn't realize, but I've been here 48 years, and when I came, the farm that I'm on had a well that was 25 feet deep, and the water table was 25 feet at that point. Then, that went dry, so we dug a well, drilled a well, Herman Clark did it in 1972, and it's 100 feet deep. And I have a personal interest in having my two wells, I have another one, because I'm way off the road, even though CUD, you know, is a nice deal for many people. Atlanta wants our water, Atlanta, Georgia is a huge city, and they want that water out of the Tennessee River. Keep that in mind. The other thing is, remember the karst, I talked about that, the cave system, we have a massive cave system. And when we talked about the super collider in 1988 before the commissioner, And when we talked about the supercollider in 1988 before the commissioner in this building, the cave guys came forth. There's no one here tonight from the spielunkers, but they talked about the supercollider and how it would cause a collapse of the cave system. And overdevelopment can do the same thing. So, that was what I wanted to say personally about my life on the farm and in being Rutherford County. And I plan to stay. I'm reading from a statement for a man that couldn't come. His name is William Stigers, 214 Witt Drive, Murfreesboro. He's talking about the baseless fears that he feels a lot of people have about this plan. He wants to know, "Where is the motivation coming from to resist any changes to a 30-year-old plan?" He thinks it's simply money. "Who would be impacted negatively by the proposed changes? Developers and real estate firms. Fewer houses to build and sell on first glance would mean fewer dollars to earn. But the opposite is true. With higher land cost per unit, a builder would have to build a house that justified the price of the land. 1,200 square feet cheaply built houses would no longer be the rule for Rutherford County. Higher square footage, customer homes with much bigger price tags would be the norm for these areas. And while realtors wouldn't have as many potential homes to sell, the higher-priced homes and associated realtor fees would offset the loss of units. With a higher quality of home available, more affluent home buyers would move to Rutherford County and provide even more revenue in sales tax increases based on their higher level of discretionary income." This is Mr. Stigers viewpoint. "The proposed zoning plan is a win-win for all the citizens of Rutherford County, and especially for those that would be impacted by such changes. In addition, it helps preserve the beauty of our county while minimizing mass sprawl and requiring higher tax rates to support such sprawl. There is no such thing as for free and unchecked sprawl. It requires significant financial resources from local governments with little return." He states, he feels like the zoning plan should be supported by the entire Rutherford County Commission. And there are a few more points here. He says, "Continuing with the current three units per acre creates a huge tax burden for the Rutherford County residents by creating a need for new schools, road improvements, increased road maintenance, emergency and police increases, increased need for additional trash disposals, et cetera. Under current Tennessee law, developers cannot be assessed an impact fee that adequately addresses the funds required for these improvements. Unless special tax districts are created for the newly developed areas, all county residents will be forced to pay for the required improvements and services." Next point he's making, "By restricting the per-unit building from three to one acre to one to one acre, the actual value of all land will increase due to the lessening of the quote 'supply' of buildable land within the county. All residents will see increased property values and the tax coffers will increase without the need for an additional, without the need for additional tax increases. This can be seen in counties such as Williamson County, Tennessee, Loudoun and Fairfax Counties in Virginia, incidentally, the richest counties in the country. The proposed zoning changes accurately account for the lack of septic soils available within the outlying areas. Any increases to the number of units allowed would ultimately require sewer connections, again increasing cost for the county taxpayers. There's currently an abundance of housing available at all price points and a plethora of commercial spaces available with high vacancy rates." That's the end of Mr. Stigers comments that I read for him because he's out of town. And I made my point, keep thinking water and think caves. I'm for the plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sanders.
Chairman, folks? Members of the Planning Commission? I'm Billy Pearson. I reside at 3026 Westet Drive in the 14th District. I have a five-acre tract in the 6th District on Miller Road. It came off of my father's property about, I think it was 96 or 97. My brother always lived on the backside. I lived in town all the years. And before they passed on and sold the remainder of the property off, they gave me a five-acre tract. They gave my brother a five-acre tract. He moved off of the backside of the farm that he had and went up to the frontage of the Miller Road and put him a double wide there. He no longer lives there. He lives in Crossville. But he owns a property. My property is adjacent to him. Before my father died and before he moved to Murfreesboro, he sold off several acres there that between the Mr. Ridleyirk Road, our property joined Ridleyirk Road, and it joins Miller Road on around the sledge. We had the whole frontage up there except the last field was Mr. Ridleyirk's road. I think it's a 12-acre tract. Now, Mr. Charles Mullins bought 10 or 12-acre tract from my father. He built him a home, and he built some homes also. He went on and built two or three more homes on this tract there down below him. Then, he bought some more off my father's place, and they built some more up there. I don't know that I live in a rural area. I did at one time. At one time, Rutherford County was very, very rural. Dairy center of the south, I believe, mid-south. Are there any farmers now? Pettis doesn't farm anymore, I don't think. He probably lives on it. I read his article. Mike Valt, I understand, runs a dairy. Dayton Lester died. I don't think he's been business more. I don't know of three dairymen in this county. I don't know of anybody much that's farming. I didn't, I've been offered to sell to buy my tract. I didn't want to sell it at the time for sentimental reasons. I didn't know where I would ever move there or not. Didn't want to build a house there maybe. Then, I decided with my age and everything, and no trees on it, there's a few trees now, it's small, that I wouldn't move out there. Then, the bottom fell out of the land. I want to sell that five-acre tract when development start. Yeah, I like the money. I don't know if anybody doesn't like money. I'm not to the point of greed, but I'd like to sell that. It's sitting there, and it's not very rural by the tax rules, I'll tell you that. It's got a high-priced dollar because I tried to get it appealed last time. And on around the road on the 15-acre tract come off of Mr. Ridleyirk Road, frontage on Ridleyirk Road, there are 10 or 12 houses built there adjacent to the property come off my father's place. Now, Arbor Homes built those, and then the bottom fell out after that. But I would sell it. I'd sell it if somebody wanted to put a mansion up there. I'd sell it. But I know that I can gobbly get more out of it at three houses an acre than I can for one, the way the economy is. So, I'm against the zoning. I talked to Mr. Demosy over the phone. I missed the first planning hearing in December. I had a conflict. Had a conflict tonight, but I thought I had to put that off. He told me he thought I wasn't in on that. I don't know where I'm in on that or not. He thought I wasn't going to fool my property between Sledge Road and Miller Road. I don't know. I haven't seen the document. I have to take his word for it. I haven't seen the word. He said he didn't think he'd change that or going to change it. Consolidated Utility Water runs right by it, frontage. There's been talk, I live five and a half miles that tract from Buckhannon, Whitworth Buckhannon, the new school by Epsomil Road. Coming around Old Red Fox Camp and down Ridleyirk Road 6.1. There's a one-mile difference. There's four roads that you can lead out from my property. Christina Hoover's Gap, Ridleyirk Road, or Epsomil Road. So, it's not very rural out there. I don't know anybody farming out there. There's some further lands rural. I don't know if every bit of the land is always perked. We've not had a problem. So, I thank you for your time. I hope you will give this urgent consideration. I'm not in the development business. I know what people talk about developers. But we need some work in this county. And we need, the banking people are laying my own economy in the duck. So, we need to get something moving because nobody's farming anymore, and nobody's milking any cows hardly. And I encourage you to vote against it and leave it at three houses per acre. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Good evening. My name is Rick Cantrell. I reside at 1431 Margaret Close in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. My comments are mostly about the zoning map itself and what objectives we're trying to address with the downzoning that, of the land area that we have behind us here. And we keep hearing these popular references to three units per acre and one units per acre. But the old R-15, which is now the RM, you couldn't really get three units per acre on that. I just want to clarify that. It was either if you did a septic tank development, you're at about 0.8 units per acre. And if you did a step system, you're probably at best at 1.8 units per acre. So, the three units per acre is a little bit of a misnomer to lead people on in that way. I've been trying to figure out what the criteria was to make the downzoning. I've come up with four reasons that I've heard mentioned coming at the public hearings and reading in the paper. And those four criteria are only county that does it that way, lack of infrastructure, sprawl, and consumption of land. Now, there may be some other reasons that I've missed here, but these are the ones that seem to be prevalent in what I, what I hear. Only county that does it this way. And I'm sure that that means that we're the only county that has an R-15 zoning classification throughout the whole county, 15,000 square-foot lots. I did a quick little Google search, looked at different counties. Anderson County, Tennessee, their minimum size lot is 22,000 square feet. Now, it's not 15,000, but then again, it's not 43,560. Washington County, Johnson City, their minimum lot size with sewer, public sewer, is 15,000 square feet. Jefferson County, it's 10,000 square feet with sewer. Wilson County, minimum lot size with sewer under standard zoning classification, standard development, not a PUD or anything like that, is 25,000 square feet. My point here is that if this is going to be the criteria, what other counties do, then let's get all that information together and analyze that and pick the county that we like or the type of plan that we like and see what these other counties are doing instead of just the generalization that we're the only county that does it that way. I don't know how that got started, but I've heard it mentioned several times. So, I went and did the research. And I did it very quickly. I didn't check all 95 counties in the state, just a very few. The other item is the lack of infrastructure. This is a very important item because it will also be used to determine if property can be rezoned in the future. Come in, make a rezoning request on 100 acres, and you'll say, "Oh, it lacks infrastructure." Well, can you tell me exactly what you mean by the lack of infrastructure? So, I've come up with four criteria of lack of infrastructure. That would be water, soils, stormwater, and roads. When Consolidated Utility District tells a developer that we don't have enough water there, then they give us a plan to go by, and we upsize those water lines. We may have to go off-site to do that. We have to buy easements from other people to do that. So, the water is being provided at the cost of the developer. There's no cost to the county for that. Soils. Soils are very site-specific. Has no impact on the county. If you have limited soils and you had limited development on that, it's just a, just the way it works. It's not something that costs the county taxpayers anything whether or not a person has the correct soils on their property. Stormwater. Bring in a project for stormwater. We already have criteria for detention ponds, retention ponds. And we've even taken it further to say you have to improve, the last I remembered now, you have to improve three drainage structures down if they're insufficient. And that's been imposed on developers to do that. So, that item has been addressed as part of the infrastructure. And if you lack infrastructure, roads. I do think that probably some issue needs to be worked out regarding roads and whether or not you do it as an exaction process, which is requiring the developer to improve the roadway in front of his development, increase the shoulder width, or increase the drainage system, or what, whatever is identified as a substandard road. In the city of Murfreesboro's subregs, it will identify what a substandard road is. It specifically tells you what that is, and specifically tells you how to improve that. And then the city will decide if you do the, you know, actual construction yourself or if you pay them money and they come and do it later. Obviously, anything dealing with roads, we need to take to the road board and have their input because ultimately, the road board is the people who are going to maintain that road system. Now, I don't know how we're going to address offsites for roadways, but I'm sure through dialogue, we can get to that point. But we need to know on the front end what type of infrastructure we're talking about. Sprawl, or preserving open space, may not be the best control for downzoning. It didn't take me long to find a good resource on the debate on this item. The study article came from the Sierra Club. And I've left you guys with copies of this at your desk. And in this, and the title of this paper is called, "New Research on Population, Suburban Sprawl, and Smart Growth." A few sentences from the article, you need to read the whole article, it's about seven pages, states, "Curtailing population growth by reducing the density of land use actually increases the amount of sprawl. And solutions that focus on low density in particular can backfire." So, it doesn't, "Downzoning may actually increase sprawl," is what the end of the study says. And it's there for you to look at. And I did, I figured the Sierra Club was probably the group that would know more about that than myself. Land consumption projection from the comprehensive plan. This is an item that has really bothered me because with the comprehensive plan, says we don't change our ways. We're going to consume 201,000 acres of land. And I've asked about this two or three times now. I gave you a paper about it last time. I am trying to figure out how we're going to consume 201,000 acres of land with the growth that's projected. I went back and read through the, through the comprehensive plans. And I'm just not sure how they get their numbers in that, in the community videos. I'm not sure how the software program generated that we're going to consume 201,000 acres of land. I gave you my numbers. Hell, I thought we'd get there. Comprehensive plan, I just can't make it work. They project that 65% of the new growth will be in unincorporated areas. Whereas today, 35% of the population of the whole county is in the unincorporated areas. So, how are we making this big leap? I think we need to have further study on this issue. Adoption of this map and ordinance may be the very thing to do. It may be, these are the objectives, and this is what we need to do, and this is the map that we need to do it with. But I'm not sure that But I'm not sure that we can do it based on the information we have this far. I think we need more study about what other counties are doing, about how we really address sprawl. Are our land consumption numbers correct? What are those true numbers? We have had a hard time resolving some issues that I've heard people talk about, one of them being the folks out on Burnt Knob Road. Seems they've had a lingering situation there about how we're going to resolve that. We've had the issue with a burial at a location that's not been approved for a cemetery. We haven't resolved that issue yet either. So how are we going to take on something this complicated where we're going to have a lot of rezonings and enforcements of this map? They're going to create a lot of inquiries about what I can do with my property now. It's going to have more litigation with it most likely. So I just don't see how we're going to be able to take this on if we can't resolve these lingering issues that are out there currently. So what, that's my comments. And like I say, I've given you this packet that's on your desk that has in there about the Sierra Club. Thank you.
Stephen Ayers, been here 51 years, know a little bit about the county. This zoning plan actually is pretty good. When you get out in the rural areas, you've got to understand, it's pretty much understood. We've got a lot of cedar trees and rock in this county. The geographical features alone is going to keep it pretty rural, and I think we all know that. You know, it's awful hard to build homes on in rocky hillsides. So we all, that's going to be there. The plan probably is much better than what we've had before. The stickler seems to be about the one acre lots. The planning commission needs to understand something here on this one acre lots. You realize that the requirement as is, is, only requires 100 feet frontage for a one acre lot. Now, if you subdivide a piece of land and you've got 100-foot frontage, and you figure an average home width of 60 foot, and you're lining them up down the road, now you realize that's only 40 feet from one end of the house to another house. 40 feet is not very much, and I know that's hardly a rural field. So that's not really accomplishing what the task is as far as a rural field, if that's what you're looking for. So what do we do with that? And here again, we kind of got a fairness issue. My personal, I've got some experience with development before and out in the county. I'm not real sure I agree with the high density in the county. If we want high density, I think we need to look to some, you know, we go to the city. They're good at that. Let them handle the high density. So where's the happy median in this? And we've done an R-20, well, at least we thought we did at one point in the past, but come to find out that was really R-15. R-20, you're going to get about 1.9 homes per acre out of an R-20 zone. Now, that's assuming that you've got some really good perccable soils or possibly a step system. And it's like Mr. Cantrell said earlier, typically, if you've got 10 acres, you'll do well to get nine lots out of 10 acres. The soils is the determining factor, obviously. I had one, Horseshoe Downs is out there on Manchester Highway. Quite frankly, that farm was so bad, I only got about, well, let's see, 64 acres only produced 18 lots. You figured it out. That's pretty much standard across the county. We've got some poor soils around, as you know. But I think it's only fair to let the folks that's in the outlying areas have the same opportunity as someone that's in the inner orange zone. And let's just keep it even across the board. Let's just go R-20. If you're in the county, just go R-20, put a lot of frontage requirement of 85 feet, and let's let it go where it will. As we very well know, there's parts of the county that even if you had that, it's not going to develop simply because of the geographical features. And we might, you know, you can knock the idea around. Anybody wanting less size than R-20 can come back and apply for it. And of course, at that point, if maybe they're wanting to pledge some accessory lands for recreation or whatever, they can do so at that time. But I think the confusion level and the hostility we're seeing between one issue to the other, you could, you could clear that right up by just going R-20 across the board. Okay, one other comment I had, it involves a commercial, and I'm probably fairly ignorant on it. If I'm not mistaken, we kind of went through that earlier. The current conditional use permit requires that the applicant lives on the subject property. And I personally feel that that needs to be changed to where the applicant does not need to live on that subject property. That may already be the case, I don't know. I'm just saying, I never really understood that, quite frankly. If you've got a, if there's a plan in place, I don't think it makes a difference whether you live on it or not. And that could hopefully help out some folks. Okay. One other thing, probably has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight, but if you discuss this at any time further, this is more specific, I just want to get this in. And I've done some developing road building before out in the county. And I'll be honest with you, this idea about having open road ditches along the road has got to go. We need to go require curbed streets in the county. The cost on it is, there's very little difference in cost from the excavating of open ditches versus just go ahead and putting in curb, the curbing in and do it similar to what you would see in the city. Makes for a much nicer layout. And quite frankly, if you've ever lived or had to maintain your lot that has these ditches along the road, that can be hard to maintain, and they typically erode and are somewhat of a safety issue if you're on your lawnmower. I think we all know that if you ever lived around that before. So at some point in time, I wish we could put a mandate in there that we go ahead and do our curbed streets, and I think that would be a real good idea at some point. But that's my comments. Thank you very much.
Michael Osborne. I currently reside outside of the county, but I also own one of the minority large acreage tracks left in the county at 1,004 Walnut Grove Road. It's a 150-acre track. It's been in my family for over 100 years. I've got family with another 50 acres that connects to it. We talk about it all the time. I am a real estate agent. I understand. I've been there, I've seen it, I hear about it, we talk about it. We currently have in place, every time somebody comes in for development, the new subdivision comes in, Mr. Demossi and staff have to go through the whole thing. It has to be approved the way you want to approve it. Having an overlay plan adds yet another layer that they've got to come in and appeal the one acre to get to two lots or three lots per acre. So it just adds yet another step to go through the process with planning. So it's another meeting for you guys, it's another meeting for everybody else, it's additional cost. And I, I've been standing back there for about the last 15 or 20 minutes, and I can tell you, I office here in Murfreesboro, I have officeed in Cool Springs, and I can tell you one of the biggest things why, I heard Williamson County throwing out there, and it's all this, that. Go over there, develop some land, and pay $10,000 impact fee for every lot, because that's what a builder's paying over there. They're paying 10 grand per lot in the city of Franklin and just outside the city of Franklin for their right to build a house. There are other controls, there are other ways to deal with this, but you've got to leave the control of the people who own the land have got to have some say over their Go through with this. That's the first step for pulling it out, take it away. And I'm sitting on 150 acres that I, right this minute, probably wouldn't know what I would do with. You know, do I come in and offer it to be rezoned? The whole thing is commercial? Right now, Wendell Jones is farming it for me. It's stay-in farmland. Heard somebody else go, is anybody farming anymore? Yes, they are. I rent it out every year at a very nominal fee just to make sure that it's still farmland, that it's still getting used until such a time where it's needed to be houses. I don't need it to be houses today. I do just fine without it. It can stay there, it can be farmed, but at a certain point, we will need it, and you're going to make it hard. Thanks.
Jake Robinson at 5128 MacArthur Avenue. I'd like to respond to Mr. McElroy at CUD. His implication was that we're going to run out of water. And I think Ms. Kendall, you can confirm on this. If you go to page 110, 109 of the comprehensive plan, it states that no matter whether we choose the suburban belt or do, or keep doing what we're doing, or go the urban route, we're still going to have the same number of growth. Isn't that true? That we assume the same amount of growth through the year 2035, no matter which plan If you'd like to defer, then I can go ahead, because that's what it says, and I've got the, you can, if you want to confirm that, you can go to the comprehensive plan. That's what it says, that there's no difference in how much it's going to cost to develop the infrastructure in the county because all services have to be, have to be provided countywide. So if Mr. McElroy is going to assume that we're going to run out of water, then what he's really suggesting is that we must reduce the amount of growth and limit how many people can move into the county. Because as far as I'm concerned, whether they live in the urban growth boundary or out in the rural area or in Murfreesboro, they're all going to use water. And if we get X number of people that move into the county or grow into the county, they're all going to use the same amount of water no matter where they live. So the water source is not an issue when it comes to how and where are people going to actually develop their properties. To Mr. Steigers, I thought that was absolutely, he made my point beautifully, that if you drive up the cost of real estate everywhere, then we can have, the real estate guys can make more money when they sell to affluent people. My question is, what happens to all the unaffluent people that want to buy a first, first-time home? Again, if you'll go back to the comprehensive plan, it states that this comprehensive plan will actually cause prices of houses to go up, and it may make it difficult for first-time buyers. And the reason is that apart from taking away some of the property by 20% offset or taking that right off the table, adding bike paths, all of those things create a higher cost. But the questions that have not been answered, if you go back to what Mr. Cantrell has said, is why are we downsizing? What is the real problem? We've told, we've been told, well, nobody else does this. Well, we know now, Mrs. Allen, that five other counties do. And I bet if we actually did more research, because he only did a cursory study on it, we would have found even more counties that have similar development as we do. So that's not an argument that we, that has any veracity at this point going further. The other question that we had is, well, how can we come up and actually use 201,000 acres when the number of people that's going to actually consume those acres is less than the number of people who actually live in our county now? We're considering that we're going to use three times as much acreage as we have right now that's been, that's consumed by residential property. So when we, when that question was put forth to the planning commission, I believe Mr. Jordan requested that the planning department come back on the next work session and provide the math behind, how did you guys come up with something that's three times as much consumption as we have now? And I think that next meeting, did you get an actual mathematical formula, Mr. Jordan? No, I think if you remember, Mr. Demossi suggested that, well, we didn't, we're not going to, that was done by community vis. We didn't really depend on that. That is not how we based our decision on downzoning. So it begs the question, what does and what is it based on? I would like, I would love, and I've actually tried to contact you guys over at Parsons Brinkerhoff, is to give us the math behind the community vis on how you came up with a suggestion that we're going to consume 201,000 acres by 2035. I don't think you're going to be able to provide a solid mathematical formula. So I still would like to ask the planning department to just meet us halfway. See, I believe it's incumbent upon this body here and the planning department that has a fiduciary responsibility to prove to the citizens why we need to do this mass wholesale downzoning and give us some real proof and not innuendo and not brush it, brush it off. I mean, we had 27 pages of comments, and I sat there and watched them bulldoze right through that stuff and dismissed most of it. There's only a few things that they made change, and they were minor changes, except for maybe the quarry. And so when we look at some of the issues, one of the things I want to cover here is the July and June 2009 Open House summary. Members of PB Americas Planning Team and the Rutherford County Planning Staff facilitated four open house meetings, because I believe in the, in the paper recently, Ms. Allen, you made the comment that there was a public outcry for conserving open space. That was one of the main things that you had pointed out in a recent article in the D and J. When we had public meetings where the community was invited, over and over again, reoccurring theme was people wanted to preserve Rutherford County. And so the best way to do that is to give the people what they want, and what they want is open space. What I'd like to know is how many people really wanted that? I mean, was it 1,000 people that you come in contact with? Or 5,000 people that wanted that? Or 10,000 people? We have 269,000 people in our county. And based on this same report, each open house was well-attended. This is four open houses. With most citizens or some open house, had more open, had more than, there were some citizens, more citizens in some open houses than others. The last CASIS meeting had the best attendance, approximately 60 participants. The Smyrna Open House had approximately 25 people. Now, I don't know what the other two were, but they must not have been big enough to quote. Okay? We have probably, I'm sure we have over 60 people in here this evening. And I would like to know, where is this, this huge clamoring and outcry to preserve open space? I don't think it exists. If you take, if I give you the credit that you had 1,000 people, divide that by 269,000, and you guys have three tenths of 1% of our population that supposedly wants to conserve some, that fellow's open space back there. Somebody else wants to conserve his open space. And so when you go back and see what the real clamoring was and what people really wanted, and you guys have this on your desk right here, you might recognize this, this sheet right here. This is your visiting session that the steering committee did. And the number one vote getter wasn't conserve open space. It says, "Don't take away development rights." 11 out of 15 people voted for that. And when the first draft went out by Parsons Brinkerhoff, and it got sent out to the steering committee, Jim Abernathy, who was on that steering committee, shot an email back to you, Mr. Demossi, I believe, and said, "Where's the property rights thing? It's not even mentioned in this comprehensive plan. You guys are not even addressing it. If you guys have already got a preconceived idea about what you want to do, just save us a lot of time and a lot of money, and let's just go ahead and see the plan right now." That was early on in the process. Never was addressed. Mr. Abernathy felt like he didn't have much support on his, on his ideas. And so it's not about conserving open space, it's really about protecting our development rights. And all we're asking is real dialogue coming from the planning department and the planning commission. Now, if we're going to, if we're going to make a claim that, oh, we didn't use that quarter million dollar plan and two and a half year effort that we put in forth to come up with while we're downsizing across the county, then why did we spend that money? And why did we spend that much time? I'm suggesting that we might spend some more time and have real dialogue. I believe there's a clamoring for a town hall style meeting where I can actually ask you a question, Mr. Demossi, or Mrs. Kendall, or anybody on the planning commission here, or maybe the mayor, and let's get a dialogue going. I can ask you a question, and you can answer, and then you can ask me a question, and I can answer it. Right now, all I'm doing is ranting. If I ask you a direct question, we have to have a point of order and see if you can even answer my question. I think people want to hear the answers to these questions. Does anybody want to hear the answer to these questions? Now, one last thing, back to the math issue. The projection estimate total county population will rise to 409,000, and the number of households will increase to 163,719 households by 2035. That's what you guys came up with. In 2009, we already had 103,700. In 2009, we already had 103,781 households. So if you do the math, we're only going to increase the total number of households by 2035 by 59,938 households. They said we're going to consume 201,000 acres. Even if we had every one of these just consume an acre, that's only 59,000 acres. How are they consuming so much more? But, that's not what the fine print said. The fine print said, "The projections and community vis modeled estimates predict much more development in rural areas, areas not currently in the cities, than has occurred in the past." In fact, the new households expected in the county between 2008 and 2035, 64% will be located in the unincorporated areas. However, 65% of the 64% will be in the urban growth zone. Now, if I'm not mistaken, the urban growth zone is that dark orange spot that you can still do three homes per acre. Am I correct on that? So they're not changing, and that's not going to affect them at all. The only people that's going to be affected by the downzoning is the other, well, if you take 64% of 59,000, you've got 38,360 in the rural area that might be affected by this downzoning. However, out of that number, only 35% will be located in this rural outline area that would need to be downzoned. 35% of 38,360, that's only 13,426 households over the next 26 years. Do the math, and it's only 516 new homes per household that we're going to add in the rural areas that we say, hey, you can't build three units per acre. We're going to make you come back in with this new layer. I believe you even quoted in the paper, Mrs. Allen, saying it's just going to be a new layer of scrutiny. Well, you know what? People are tired of scrutiny about dealing with their own property. It's our property. So someone, please, give me some real math on why we need to do a total wholesale change for a measly 519 houses per year. And if you give them a full acre, they're only consuming 519 acres. That's 13,000 acres over 26 years. It's nowhere near 201,000 acres. There's a serious math issue with your plan, and you guys, I think that it's incumbent upon them to prove to us where those numbers came from. Otherwise, this plan is a fraud.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
I'm Mike Linton, and I live at 1505 Spence Creek Lane in the unincorporated part of the county, and that's a hard act to follow. But I like to answer a question about clamoring, and at least one place of where it's coming from, and my comments will be quite short. But one place where the clamoring is coming from is from the state legislature and the people of Tennessee. Now, one of the problems with the clamoring is that a lot of the folks who are clamoring are dead. But there is still a lot clamoring. What I'm talking about is one of the reasons why this plan exists. And excuse me for reading, but there are some things which I want to make certain that I get right. This comes out of partially a law passed in 1976. And that law is called "The Agricultural Forest and Open Space Land Act of 1976." And here's what that law did. Quote, "One of its purposes was Agricultural Forest and Open Space Land Act. The purpose of the act is to preserve agricultural forest and open space land." Now, remember, this is the Tennessee Legislature in 1976. "The General Assembly finds, among other things, that the existence of such land is being threatened from urban sprawl, which will, quote, 'bring about land use conflicts.'" Well, we're seeing one, right? "Create high costs for public services." Notice how the costs for our public services here in Rutherford County are going up, and in the city of Murfreesboro, too. And continuing the quote, "Increase energy use and simulate land speculation." Item four. "The preservation of agricultural and forest land is found to be important to help produce, quote, 'food and fiber for a hungry world,' end quote." Five. "And the preservation of open space will help benefit the public and those who might not have accesses to natural resources such as water, air, wildlife, et cetera." Number five. Furthermore, the General Assembly finds that, quote, "Many landowners are being forced by economic pressures to sell such agricultural forest or open space land for premature development by the imposition of taxes based not upon the value of the land in its current use, but on its potential for conversion to another use." End quote. Now, this is from the Act of 1976. It was a long time ago. And again, the folks who are clamoring were the people of Tennessee, as expressed through their elected representatives in the state legislature. Now, that's not the only reason why this plan exists. But that, I think, probably is the granddaddy cause. And that's part of the source of the clamoring. Thank you.
I'm Scott Abernathy. I live at 1503 North Highland Avenue in Murfreesboro, and I promise not to rant. Anyway, Mr. Cantrell pointed out four things that he'd heard about this plan, opposition to it or for it, et cetera, et cetera. I want to point out one more that I keep hearing. And we had Ms. Allen come talk to us as well at the Realtors Association. And one of the things that was expressed to us is that this plan may actually reduce lawsuits in our county. I would like to express that I don't see that happening without hard and fast rules on the way you zone or rezone. As long as you continue to have a zoning request be dictated by the audience, as opposed to hard and fast rules, I think this will actually increase legal ramifications, especially initially, whenever you are right off the bat rezoning people who don't want to be rezoned. I think you're just begging for a lot of lawsuits right off the bat.
Thank you, Ms. Abernathy.
I'm Joey P. I reside at 1501 Cripple Creek Road in Reedville. I live on 30 acres attached to my wife's family farm. It's been in their family for several generations. My father-in-law spent his lifetime accumulating what was once several hundred acres. I'd almost say several thousand acres in the eastern part of the county. When I first heard of this proposal, the biggest thing I saw was we got a solution in search of a problem. And you've heard several folks talk about green spaces. Well, what's a green space? A green space is not a park in the middle of a subdivision. It's not a jungle gym for the kids to crawl on, and maybe a swimming pool. Green space is a field of corn waving in the wind, where you can smell fresh-cut hay as you're standing on your front porch. Or it might be that wheat that's coming up right now that in a couple of months turn nice gold before it's harvested. That's green space. If you want to preserve green space in this county, you do that by putting as many houses into a piece of property as you can, so you let the farmers in the rural areas stay rural. Now, that, that 400 acres that my wife's family has, it's only got one rock on it. It's just 400 acres wide. So it's not going to make the three houses per acre. In some cases, you might do good to get one house per 50 acres. It was very painful for me. And they say that politics makes strange bedfellows. But to think that I'm standing up here arguing on the same side as real estate developers is very troubling. But at the same time, I think in this particular case, we are on the right side of this issue. But if you have 175-acre farm that goes to auction, it's been in one family for 90 years. A little old lady died as a widow, or, excuse me, as an old maid, and she refused to sell to even us who owned the adjacent farm, because she wanted it all together until she passed away. And then the family comes in, and they talk to developers, and say, okay, what can we do with it? Well, Mr. McElroy and CUD says, "You don't have a water line capacity to service a subdivision. If you want to put more houses there, you're going to have to come in and replace the oldest water line in the county." Two-inch line with the interior of it so corroded, it was really about an inch and a quarter line. Trust me, I was on the end of it. Then you have the road issues, I understand. They turned it into 14 lots, the smallest one being five acres. Now, there's two houses that have been built on those 14 lots. They mowed all five acres. Is that rural living? Maybe because our hillside's behind them, they can look out and see the trees, but then they bulldozed all the trees to do that. Putting one house per acre is not going to help the matter. You need to put as many houses on the piece of property so you can preserve the rest of the land. Paying a consultant hundreds of thousands of dollars, or whatever the fee was, as a former consultant myself, the first thing you'd want to know is what do you want the answer to be? Then you come back with the facts to get the answer you want. It pained me to see this body turn down a good, small businessperson in this county to move and open and expand their business. Why? Because people around her, not in my backyard. And it's one of those things, when you move to the county, there's things like the pig farmer you may have to put up next door, that thinking that when you buy this house, that that nice field behind you is always going to be a hay field, or a corn field, or something else, it's not. People have property rights in this country. And when you have a government that's trying to limit those and take them away and reduce those, and that's really what you're having. And I'm glad somebody else brought up the fact that when the property tax revenue goes down because of this, there goes the property tax rate for everybody because of this limiting factor that you're doing with the downzoning. When you have the sprawl that was talked about, when somebody said, "We're going to have less sprawl by putting one house per acre." No, you're not. You're going to have more sprawl. You're going to have all these houses on one-acre lots. Great. You're going to look like Jacksonville, the largest city in the country by real estate area. So, this is such a wrong-headed track that our county's proposing. It's unfortunate that it has gotten to this point. I guess what I would, what I've said, I hope wouldn't be considered a rant, but it is very disturbing as one of the folks that is affected by this particular proposal that you're putting forth. And I would urge you to deny it like you did the lady before.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners. I gave you guys a handout here. I'll speak to that. The text of my briefing is showing in the handout. I live at 676 Cottonfield Lane in Murfreesboro. And I became interested in loaning land values on the one-acre parcel as a result of a lot of dialogue that was going on about the concerns and comments about land values. So I started digging into it. And I'll talk about the data I got, how it was processed, plotted, and my observations. Next page. I went to the county property assessor's office to get some data on one-acre parcels in the county and in Murfreesboro. Property assessor's office worked with the folks in the GIS office, who provided them with a listing of parcel numbers for parcels between .9 and 1.1 acres. And for the unincorporated area of the county, that was 3,061 parcels. And for the city of Murfreesboro, there were 451. I was really surprised that there are 451 parcels within the boundaries of Murfreesboro that are one acre. The GIS parcel numbers were used to assess the value of the land from the assessor's database. The parcels were grouped in $10,000 increments, and they were plotted at the midpoint of each group's point. The next chart shows, next page shows a chart where we have the data from the county being plotted. A large number of those one-acre parcels are in the $35,000 range. And according to the chart and data I have, that's in excess of 1,600-some-odd parcels. The minimum value of the data set is $2,100 for a one-acre parcel, and the maximum is $156,000 for a one-acre parcel. And those are in the county. These extreme values are likely related to local geography and location. For example, at the low end, property that will not perk, or is on a steep hill or on a blue line, is so valued. Similarly, property that's close to commercial note may be placed at a higher value. The attributes of the parcels determine the value of the parcel. I generated a similar plot for the parcels in Murfreesboro. Think the important thing on that is that there's a cluster of data in the neighborhood of $40,000 per acre. You see the same widespread that we saw with the county parcels, and the same observations with regard to why you see the price swing would apply to the city. The assets of a parcel determine its worth. In summary, $35,000 for a one-acre parcel in rural county is not uncommon. If you've got a 100-acre farm, that's $3.5 million. So there's been a lot of discussion about the folks who are landowners not getting their fair shake. And I think that this data shows that that ain't necessarily so. That's a very nice IRA for the landowner. So I don't understand what the problem is with one-acre parcels. I would suggest that we approve the zoning. Earlier, Mr. Jake Robinson talked about water. And when I was a kid, I grew up out west, in Cheyenne, Wyoming, Denver, Colorado. And in Denver, every summer, starting in May, we'd look at the mountains. And the snowpack determined whether or not we could wash our cars and mow and water our lawns during the summer. By August, things got really bad from time to time. And right now, Denver is drawing a tremendous amount of water out of the Platte River. It's not nearly what it used to be. Some of you may also have heard about the Lala Aquifer going down. Water is an issue. If we don't have enough water for new construction, it ain't going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeder.
My name's Ron Williams. I live at 1109 Overseals Road out in Rockvale. And I have a little different take on what I'm going to ask you for. I want some details that are not in the plan, that aren't the big picture that everybody else is talking about. As we saw earlier, when the lady came up here to put the business in out there, that's something, that situation is not uncommon for all over the county. And one of the biggest problems that I've seen over the last years is there's not, has not been an identifiable area that people can know, yes, I can go and put in a business here. Or the people that are living there can understand that someday, there may be a business here. When they did this back in 1984, it was, everything's zoned the same. So we have run into a constant streams of problem after problem after problem that allows both sides to get angry because, as a lot of people here want to say, because, as a lot of people here want to say, "I want my rights." Well, if you buy a piece of property and you can't do what you want to on it, there's no difference between that and saying you're going from the R-15 to the acre. I mean, it's the same difference. So I think in this plan, we really need to identify some areas from this in the future growth, because that's what we're talking about. I guess this plan's over the next 20 years, 25 years, is what we're trying to do. Because we've come from one that's over that period of time. It's needed some upgrades. And as I understand it, this is a proposed plan that's been going on for... I don't know how many... I've been to, I don't know, eight or nine meetings. And this has been worked through and worked through and worked through. And, you know, the old saying, "Everybody wants to go to heaven, but nobody wants to die," is kind of pretty relevant, pretty evident, in trying to put one of these plans together. And as I understand... But so, putting in those areas, or those zones, or commercial zones, or something that's really been needed for two reasons. Number one, to avoid the community from having a misunderstanding of what can and can't, and the revenue for the county. Unless we get commercial operating businesses in the unincorporated part of the county, they move close to town, the city annexes them, and then we lose all that tax base. And then you want to come to all the 269,000 people in the county and say, "We've got to raise this property taxes because we've got to build a new school." A new school costs, what, now, $100 million or better? I mean, that's got to come from somewhere, and it comes from the property tax. So when you want to fuss about one side about, "I can't get my money out of this, so I want everybody else to pay for it." And I don't think that's fair. I own property. I had three of my properties that went up. I've had three of my properties that I have that had wells on them, that the wells have gone down, and now I've had to be on CUD because the water table has gone down after years and years and years of the water being good there. So the water is a real problem that they were talking about earlier. I personally don't have a problem. I mean, I own land. I don't have a problem with the one acre, as long as we can come back and go through a process of getting more houses per acre if we need to, because we have to have a plan to start. Time after time after time, people have come up here with subdivisions, and the answer from legal has been, "We can't turn them down because that's a use by right." Now, they were in a floodplain. They were on subpar roads. They didn't have wide enough roads to support a big subdivision. And these same people that want to reserve these nice green fields are the same ones that give me the one-finger wave when they're going by me on my tractor on the road. So, you know, which end of the stick do you want on on these things? We've got to be realistic and be about the money. If you follow the money from everybody that's talked here, you kind of know where their thing is. But the county has to take care of the people that are paying the property taxes. That's enough about that. The other thing that I'd like to see done on this, the one acre for one house, prior to 1984, you could go out in your farm, if you needed a little extra money, you could sell off an acre to somebody without having to bring in a development. Now, it's got to be five acres in it, Doug. I mean, without going through the zoning, without going through all of the big zoning property. Prior to 1984, you could just map out an acre of land and sell it. So I don't know why we don't put, even if we go to the other route, why we don't have a one-acre ability to... For somebody to sell off an acre of land as opposed to the five acres. Because when you sell somebody five acres that don't know nothing about farming or getting out there, they're lost. They don't have the equipment to take care of five acres. Next thing they know, they're running their big things over in ditches because they don't know how to run farm equipment, because you've got to have farm equipment to run five acres. I mean, it runs into different problems. So I'd like to see you change it to where, instead of there being five acres, as a minimum, you could sell off would be one acre. And then finally, a small little detail in this is, if I own property right next door to another guy, and we want to trade a little to make... Straighten up some lines, right now, we've got to go through a big process. You can't sell less than five acres. I had one gentleman out in my area that... They got up there, and they told him that he was going to have to do this. So he sold his neighbor seven acres and bought back two to quit from having to go through that process. So it should be something that's in the regs that they would put down where joining properties could swap this without having to go through this big lengthy process in there. But I think that's all my notes. But I support... I mean, I own property. I don't have a problem with the one acre, as long as if I want to develop it, I can come back and come to this board and do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else?
My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. And first of all, I'd like to thank Ron Williams for coming and speaking. When he was a county commissioner, he was always in the audience of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee's meetings. And I appreciate his comments. Wilman Dykman, Tennessee's official state historian from 1981 to 2002, stated, and I quote, "Planning for the future with a community or a family is not a loss of freedom. It is growth toward maturity. In fact, it is the ultimate freedom, to shape our own future, discover a viable livelihood, appreciate our assets." End quote. Smart growth is not about curtailing all growth. It's about each community's planning wisely for its future. Our comprehensive plan process and development of the revised zoning ordinance and map has gotten input from affected people in the community to consider both present and future needs of both present and future people. Nothing over the course of this three-plus-year process has occurred in a vacuum. Planning for smart growth is about finding ways to manage sprawl and improve our total quality of life. But smart growth is not just about sprawl. It's also about finding ways to revitalize our rural towns' economic base so that jobs, tax revenue, and social services will provide for current residents and attract future ones. Smart growth is about finding ways to preserve the scenic beauty and other environmental assets that will attract tourism, second home and retirement development. It's certainly normal for you to have concerns about those whose economic future might be affected by zoning changes. It's normal to have a concern that there may be landowners who haven't been aware of this process, haven't been aware that this process has been going on for the last three and a half years, and who will be surprised when they plan to sell their land to a developer in order to provide for their retirement. I also think it's normal for each planning commissioner and member of the Board of Commissioners to be thinking in terms of the future of Rutherford County as a whole and making the commitment to finally fulfill the growth policy mandate of Tennessee Public Chapter 1101. The legislature and governor recognized the value and special quality unique to Tennessee when referring to rural areas within each county when they agreed that, and I'm quoting from PC 1101, "Rural areas shall include territory that is not within the urban growth or planned-growth areas and is preserved as agricultural lands, forests, recreational areas, wildlife-managed areas, or for uses other than high-density commercial, industrial, or residential development." End quote. Remember William Dykman's words, "Planning for the future is the ultimate freedom, to shape our own future, discover a viable livelihood, and appreciate our assets." Rutherford County, what do you plan to keep? What do you plan to throw away? Thank you.
Susan?
Well, I'm not planning on renting either. That rock that Joey lives on is about nine miles from me. His younger brother, that won't float. Anyway, Robert P., I live over on 4047 Bivens Hill Road. A lot of my friends have got up and spoke tonight. Some of the things they've said, I've agreed with, some I don't. And just wanted to explain a few of those. Mr. McRoy told us some hard truths. But anybody that's been in planning for a while, you know that water is going to limit development anywhere, whether it's New York City, Atlanta, or Rutherford County, Tennessee. That's the bottom line. Your soil availability is going to limit your growth in certain areas. Car systems can limit growth in certain areas. There are places you cannot develop, or you shouldn't develop, flood zones being among those. But the proposal that you've got in front of you, a lot of hard work's gone into. I've attended some of the meetings. I put some input in. Don't feel like some of it was listened to. But kind of give you a little background. My family's been here since Rutherford County was county. And I'm not planning on going anywhere. I hadn't seen any good reason or any better place to live. And so I'm planning on staying here. I do live on a farm. And I don't plan on selling it. I'd like to pass it on to my children. I think most rural farmers dream of that, having family that they can pass their land on to. You know, I'd kind of like to think that maybe one of them, or both of them, would like to move their family out somewhere on our farm and have a house there, because I like having my kids close. And I'd like to think someday I'll have grandkids to do that with, too. But talking about farmers, a lot of the people that live out in my area, and the farmers have contacted me, and basically, they're not happy with being downgraded. And part of it is, a lot of these rural farmers are not affluent. They're not wealthy. They've got a lot of land. Now, I heard Steve's... And Steve is one of the friends I was talking about. And I heard what he said, and what my land's worth. Buddy, I could use $3 million. If you want to sell it, I mean, if you want to buy it, we might do some talking. But the highest price I've seen for land in rural areas sell, I think, was $20,000 an acre out in Walter Hill on some really good soils. And that's been a few years back. I think the price of land right now has dropped some. So I mean, I understand Steve's math is impeccable, but right now, that's not what the market's bringing. The main reason I got up here to talk to you is, to me, what we're doing to these farmers is we're taking away their 401K. They're not affluent. When they retire, some of these guys are going to have to sell their property to be able to maintain their lifestyle, or even to eat regularly. And to me, what we're doing, we're exercising eminent domain, and basically, we're condemning this land to a lower value. We're taking property rights away from these people. We're taking money out of their pocket. We're taking money out of their pocket without them saying, "I want to do this." We should have the right to say, "I want my land zoned agriculture," or "I would like to have it zoned differently." But I think that's an individual right. Now, when we look at it, if it's in the flood zone, I don't expect it to be, you know, something that you can build on. But I just don't feel good about the direction we're headed by taking these rights away from these individuals that happen to live outside an imaginary draw-and-line out here that, by the way, I fought to keep further in. The only other thing that I wanted to talk about for just a minute or two is density. And I've been where you're at. And sitting in those seats gets mighty hot sometimes. And it seems like every time I have something in my area, it's uncomfortable, and everybody comes away unhappy, kind of like this lady, this last zoning hearing that we heard. But it is so frustrating for me that if we're looking at cookie-cutting, planting, and that's basically what we're doing, going to one-acre lots. I mean, if you want to look at that, go out Kason Lane, right there. That's what the whole county will look like if we go to one-acre lots, if you could develop one-acre lots everywhere. We need to have the ability to put a lot more denser housing anywhere we want to in this county where it's possible. If you keep it dense, then you have more green space. You have more open fields. You have more trees. You have the places that people enjoy seeing. And that's what makes Rutherford County good. I mean, drive up north a little bit, you know, get up around DC area and in those areas, and that's what these one-acre lots is going to drive this county into being. And I personally don't want to see that. You know, I grew up on the Stones River. I know where every rock is in there, and most of the good fishing holes. And, you know, right now, our county's polluted. There's not a stream in Rutherford County that is safe to drink out of. Hadn't been for several years. But when I grew up, you could. There were springs along the side that you drank out of. But there's so many things that we need to take care of. But where we're going to, this density of one lot per... One house per acre, I mean, basically, you're taking a cookie cutter form, and you're putting it over all the land in this county, and you're saying, "Okay, we'll put a house on each one of these out in these rural areas." Whereas if you took them and bunched them together in tighter density, you're going to leave a lot of that green space that all of us like and enjoy. And that's what I would like to see us do with these rural areas here. The last thing I'll say, we're taking land if you pass this, or the county commission passes this. And I promise you, I'm kind of like some of the people out of my district. I'm not going to change my mind on this. And this comes to the commission. I'll be voting it down, not because there's not a lot of good ideas in there, but just for this one issue on the rural areas. But keeping our density low, keeping the property rights for our people, to me, that's the important things. And that's what I'd like to leave you with. Don't exercise eminent domain and condemn these people to a lower-valued land, because that's basically what we'd be doing. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. P. Wait just a second. If no one else comes up, Jake, you'll be able to, okay? Anyone else that hasn't spoken would like to speak?
I'm Robert Latimer. I live at 5312 West Trimble Road in Milton. We've had a lot of good speakers tonight. I normally don't get out like this, but I'm kind of passionate about this. You know, our liberty's at stake here. You know, our rights are given to us by Creator, not government. The only purpose of government is to protect our rights. And I feel like our rights are being trampled on here. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. I'm Randall Branch. I live 1616 Richland Road, about five miles east of MTSU. I'm representing myself, but I'm twice president of Stone River Watershed Association. The mission of the Watershed Association is to protect, preserve, enhance, and restore the natural resources within the Stone River watershed. I grew up in West Tennessee, relatively new to this area, only been here 40 years. At one... My father was an ag teacher. I guess at one time, we were referred to as conservationists. Now, I consider myself an environmentalist. Some people have demonized that term. Some of the same people that demonize that term also reap from the benefits of the work that we do. Thursday night, the East Fork of the Stones River was running at about 400 cubic feet per second. Our Watershed Association has an event coming up this Saturday, Stones River Relay. We run bike, canoe, all the way across Cannon County. The water's running about 100 cubic feet per second now. Where'd that water go to? Well, it went to the lake. So we'll get to get some of it back. The water that's in that river now is there from groundwater. How did that groundwater get there? Well, it got there through green space. We work to preserve green space. I've heard green space demonized. Permeable land is what provides the water a space to get into the ground and hold it. I've heard guttering or curbing streets promoted tonight. That does nothing but get rid of water. There are a lot of misconceptions that people are hanging on to about green space, about environmentalism, about bikeways, greenways, parks that provide the quality of life that brings the people in to purchase the land. Those people are going to have to have water. We can conserve water. We can use less water. We can conserve water, we can use less water, we don't have to use the same amount that we're using. And we can grow the groundwater supply with more green space. New York City did it by buying up the Catskills, 1,600 square miles. We've only got 1,000 square miles. That's between us and Cannon County and a little bit of Davidson County, that's in the Stone River watershed. I'd like people, I'm speaking for myself, not for the Watershed Association. I'm not speaking for or against the zoning changes. I'm in agreement that you can screw up an acre and you can screw up three houses on an acre. It's got to be done smart. I don't think every individual, given his own desire to do what he wants to do with his own property, is going to do the right thing. There has to be some regulation. Thank you.
Excuse me, what did you say your name was?
Randall Branch.
If there's no one else, Mr. Robinson, you're up.
Since Steve invoked my name, I think I at least need to respond. I think Steve did a great job on a report to show what the values of the properties are. But I think, Steve, you've really confirmed what we're saying right now, is right now, our property is valuable. But once you draw that line on a map and take that zoning away, it will necessarily go down in value. You can't go to a guy and say, "I could have put theoretically three homes an acre on your property, but now we can only put one." If you did have a developer that was interested, that developer is now artificially induced to go into that UGB, the urban growth boundary, and a few of those nodes that allow that higher density. By nature, a developer is not going to buy a land and give you the same price for your land if he can't develop the same number of households on that land. That's just pure fact. That's basic econ 101. And I also want to thank the other gentleman for pointing out that 1976 law. I think the legislative body was a much different complexion back then, and now it's maybe time to update that law, maybe the PC 1101 as well, and bring it back into more alignment with people's property rights. Again, on the water issue, remember, we're not disputing that there might be a challenge with the source of water and how much water we have available. That's really not the question. Again, the comprehensive plan has already pointed out that no matter how much water we have available, our growth is still going to happen with or without this map. With or without, if we change this or not, we still get the same number of people, according to the comprehensive plan, moving into our county. So are you going to deny people moving in? All we're talking about is where they move into, whether they move into nodes or stacked impact, high-density or low-density, one acre and use up more. Bottom line, it's the same number of people moving in, will use the same amount of water, or maybe we could conserve some water. I'm not against wasting water, and I'm not for pollution. But at the same time, that is a false argument to say, "Since there's going to be less water, we have to downzone." That's not going to change the number of people moving into our county. Again, go back to the comprehensive plan, and it bears it out. The number of people will come to our county regardless of which of those three plans we choose. So just please remember that when you make any kind of decision. I would like to encourage you guys, I think what would be needed right now, I think would be appreciated by the general public, is to have something similar to the comprehensive plan for the zoning. Let's have a steering committee for the zoning laws. Why is it just between our consultant and our planning department? We haven't had really much public debate about the zoning codes. This public debate is about pushing back and trying to slow you guys down and say, "Wait a minute, where is the enthusiasm to embrace the public now and look at these zoning codes? And let's have a steering committee and have some people like Rick Cantrell, who wrote the 1984 codes, who has some good ideas, who's also in the private sector now that understands that, or Jim Abernathy, or some of these guys from the, there's people from all different sides that can maybe offer maybe a different way to do it." I had a conversation with the mayor, and he even offered to me, he said, "Well, what if we did it this way?" I said, "Well, that might be a good idea. We need to talk about it, though." And we're not talking about it. All we're doing is talking to each other, but we're not talking with each other yet.
Thank you again, Mr. Robinson. I'm ready to close the public hearing unless there's someone else that hasn't spoken.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Boyce. I live at 2214 Garrison Cove. To be honest with you, before tonight, I was unaware of what these zoning regulations were all about. I apologize for that, but I've been, my time's been very consumed lately, military obligations. As I sat in the back of the room, I had an open mind, and I listened to the pros and cons of this debate, and something that just kept gnawing away at me through this whole thing was it seemed to me that there's something extremely un-American about a group of people gathered together to decide the fate of other people's property. At conclusion of the Revolutionary War, the thing that set us apart from all of Europe was property rights. When the conclusion of the war, matter of fact, the government was so broke, it gave out land grants to the soldiers for payment. They weren't as broke then as we are now, but... Now, one of the things that kind of, I don't know, and I apologize, I didn't think anything through before I came up here, so I'm just anxious to find out what I'm going to say as you are. But, you know, for the gentleman to stand up from Denver and say he didn't have a problem voting on the fate of someone else's property would probably have a different attitude if we were trying to decide the fate of whether he could use one of the bedrooms in his house or not. There's no difference, just a bigger scale. And I would highly urge you to vote against this. I just think it's extremely un-American and goes against everything that we've fought for as a nation.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Seeing no one, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed and offer a few minutes to the staff or to our consultants to say anything that they want to say.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, we're open for questions. I mean, we've received a lot of comments, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that the commission may have, as I'm sure our consultant staff is as well.
Chairman, I have some questions.
Yes, Rhonda.
I just made a few notes, Doug. I thought it would be appropriate for you to respond to. There was one comment that said that this would make, that the rezoning would make it difficult for first-time homebuyers. Talk to us all about that a little bit. There's really no substantive change in residential medium and then inside the municipalities. So for the majority of the county, nothing changes. So the availability of properties and how they're, whether or not they're affordable will remain the same. Is that correct?
You're referring, I'm assuming, to the RM area, the three units an acre? The cities, well, I'll speak mostly to Murphy's Brothers, I'm more familiar with theirs, but their zoning starts out at RS 15, which is basically the equivalent of RR 15, and kind of goes more dense from there, RS 12, RS 10, multifamily zoning. The, again, the RM that we're proposing in the zoning map that you have on the screen is, basically, is RR 15 currently, still allows three units per acre. Of course, the yellow area on the map, the bright yellow, it's kind of a different shade on what I'm looking at, but the, that is the area that is the one unit an acre on the map. But I guess to answer your question, that area is in the orange, is pretty much the same as what we currently have. Yes, ma'am.
And then the fellow said something about the 100-foot road frontage. I saw you kind of wrinkle your brow. I did, too. Did you have any comments about that?
Well, no, it's basically, the first thing I did was pull out the ordinance, make sure that that was the case, and it is 100-foot. Now, that's just a minimum lot width. That's not, and I think that's kind of, I wasn't sure if that's what, I believe that was Mr. Ayers that said that was getting at. It's a minimum of 100-foot. That doesn't mean that every lot that you create has to be 100-foot and has to be exactly one acre. You know, it can vary from that. So that, you know, his example that he used about, well, if you have a 100-foot lot and a 60-foot home, that's only 40-foot, you know, to the property line. Of course, in residential areas, even in this what we're proposing, in either the RM area or the RL, we're still proposing the same setbacks we have now. It's a minimum of 10-foot side setback, that's currently what we have, 40-foot front. But again, that's, that is a minimum. That is not what it has to be in order to be subdivided.
And then I know we've talked about burial plots and cemeteries before. If I'm remembering this correctly, your hands are pretty well tied in terms of private burial plots. Is that correct? I was thinking that you'd referenced having to call the state before, and there was some inquiry about, you know, is there some, if it's not a cemetery for like a church or whatnot, just go over that for us again, because just refresh everybody's memory about that.
Yeah, I mean, we discussed cemetery regulations in our new zoning code.
Like single plots?
More on the lines of the larger ones. I think you're correct in what you say, as far as the state, there are regulations that if it's for religious reasons, those kind of things, most of those requirements from the state are exempt, so.
And then on the PUDs, the 20% open space, first of all, that's existing in our regulations currently, isn't that right? That's not new information?
That's correct. No, this isn't new. Now, I will say, well, go ahead and finish your questions, I'm sorry.
Well, and then I just want to reinforce that that's voluntary, that a developer's not required to do that. That's choosing to go into a PUD development is by his choice.
That is correct. And a couple of things I did want to mention about that, I believe that was Mr. Jensen when he spoke on that. Again, and we've discussed it at the planning commission a number of times, when we first crafted those regulations for the PUDs a few years ago, that was before the economy took the downturn, it did. We've never really had a chance to put that in practice, and so when we do finally get a chance to put that in practice, we know that it may be, have to be tweaked. We understand that. We have actually tweaked it from the current zoning ordinance, what we currently have, into the new zoning code. The comment that he had about the amount of open space in the step systems, you know, we had some discussion about that at one of our work sessions. Basically, the change that we made was that we are not going to count the step systems anymore in the open space calculations. So the example, I forget exactly what he said, I'll just try to use, I'll just say 100 acres. If you have 100 acres and 20 acres, that has to be the step system, you're calculating open space only on 80 acres, not on the full 100 acres. Also, I've spoken with some folks from the Home Builders Association, and I believe Mr. Robinson had referred to him on a number of occasions, Mr. Averwater, Jim Averwater. One of the concerns they had had to do with offsetting that amount that was being set aside for open space in increased density. It was always our intent to allow that. Essentially, what we're not, we're not saying is that somebody has to get a PUD, they're stuck with three units an acre, one unit an acre, whatever the underlying zoning happens to be. This is a new zoning classification, it is an actual rezoning of property, and you can have increased density in that development, provided you have the necessary tools to support that. Now, that was always our intent, and my conversations with Mr. Averwater were essentially that, you know, they understood that, but didn't really say that anywhere. So one of the changes that we made, it's in the summary of changes that you have, is that when on the purpose statements, we actually put in there that it's the intent of this district to allow for increases in density, to offset any open space requirement or anything like that, just to make it clear that that's what we're talking about. So I just wanted to bring those points out, just so everybody understood that. But your point, again, that it is voluntary is correct. This is not something that builders have to do, it's something they may choose to do.
And then before, when we talked about that our county was the only county that had the zoning the way that we do, we, to the best of my knowledge, we weren't referencing any specific lot sizes. We were saying that having property as residential development as a use by right, we were the only ones, to the best of our knowledge, that had that.
Best of my knowledge, yes. Now, I haven't had a chance to look at, you know, the items that Mr. Cantrell brought up, I mean, those were just brought up tonight for the first time. I thought Wilson County, I know you mentioned that one, I thought they had areas that had higher minimum lot sizes than just, I forget what he said, but, so, I mean, because I've looked at their zoning map from in the past, so.
And then the last thing I had, Mr. Chairman, is really just more of a comment, it's not a question for Doug. On the chart that was referred to earlier about the most number of votes that were received in the comprehensive plan about don't take away development rights, there were actually 26 questions that were asked, or 26 categories that were asked, and of those, nine of them related back to preservation of farmland, access to natural resources, identifying suitable areas for development, careful not to extend services too far out, there's a cost-benefit comparison there, preserve the rural and historic heritage, encourage preserving quality sites and resources, open space quality recreational opportunities, maintain character, don't crowd, and provide recreational small parks within new developments. Those nine categories received 32 votes compared to the 11 that the don't take away property rights do. So I just wanted that to be fairly represented about what the interest was in that exercise.
Anything else in the commission? Mike?
Two or three points here. Early on, Charlie Montgomery asked, and I thought might have a valid point or ask a valid question, that the property values in these, in this outlying area might drop. Now, and I don't know whether that's right or not, and therefore, county revenue might drop. So I'd like to ask staff to contact Bill Bonner's office to see if, in fact, how much of the value that's on the books now, if they were downzoned, you know, individually or as a whole, their opinion, would it in fact drop the tax revenue for the county by dropping the property value? And I think that's a valid, I think he brought up a valid point. I don't know whether, I don't know what the answer to that question is, but I think Mr. Bonner, being our property assessor, would be the one to answer that. Rick Cantrell and Jake Robinson both made the point on the land consumption, so I think next time, I'd like, you know, somebody run through the math on that. I think that's only fair to them and us. Jake made a point that Ms. Allen, something about her open space thing, and open space being way down on the list, and I was planning commission rep on the comprehensive steering committee, so I want to point this out. Now, open space quality is way down with one vote, but I would back up Ms. Allen there and say that preservation of farmland is number two on the list with nine votes. So another point, we heard, you know, a lot about affordable housing, it would raise the price of housing. I was also pointing out that in the steering committee exercise, that affordable housing got three votes, but also preserve rural and historic heritage was at the same point. It got the same number of votes. So, you know, just a couple of points there. And the last, I've been contacted in the last week by three property owners, all either own or former Farm Bureau members, all active farmers or have been, and, you know, two of them outside the district, one of them inside the district, all three were in favor of, you know, of that map up there right now. So I, you know, and I'm going to try to take some time and get out and contact some more of my neighbors, property owners in the county, and get a little feedback. And I think it'd be incumbent upon us all to do the same.
I've got something that's a little off subject. Earlier in the meeting, when we talked about the rezoning or the lack of rezoning, and we talked about the chiropractic office next door on Last Castle Spike, and Mr. Demossi said that since you'd become director, we'd... said that since you'd become director, we'd veered away from conditional use permits. I'm wondering why? That chiropractic office worked perfectly, in my opinion. It allowed that house to be utilized in a business-type setting without changing the rezoning, and now that, the rumor mill says that man is now moving on to another location, and it's going right back to being a house. That was a perfect setting, in my opinion, for what happened. If we had zoned that, that would have been a mistake, and if we had said no, the guy wouldn't have had the opportunity to have grown his business enough to get out, to get out and get started and move into wherever he's going to next. So I just hope we'll look in the future more in-depth about why we aren't, why we're getting farther and farther away from the conditional use permits that lapse upon sale of ownership of the property, because in isolated instances, in my opinion, they worked great. And I think that's a textbook, you know, example of where they did work great, and if we take that tool away from us, that puts us in a harder place to do business. But that's just my opinion, oughta be yours.
One short comment, I echo Will's sentiment here. I think it worked, I think that's an example where it worked well, and if he leaves, it goes back to being a residence, he hasn't changed the outside or the character of the neighborhood by doing that, and, you know, I just think it worked well there. So I echo Will's comment.
No, sir, unless there's specific questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I do wanna apologize for making that so confusing for you at the very beginning, as we were getting into that.
It's okay, it's probably my age.
No, but there was a purpose for my madness there, and as I said, I was just trying to be a mediator in that situation, where hopefully that we could have worked something out there for both parties, because I think we all were in agreement that we were trying, we know both situations there. However that was a residential area, that she's trying, we're trying to put a business in or whatever there, but I did wanna apologize to you to place that situation there, and I didn't mean for that to go that way and what happened.
Absolutely, no apologies necessary.
I wanna commend Commissioner Reed, 'cause I think he was trying to do the right thing there, 'cause it is a good community with a lot of good folks that take a lot of pride in their property, and an excellent family that does a very good job of running that business, and they're very popular in the community.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Craig?
Is the, Mike has a very valid points right there, some questions that we do need answering before we can make any decision. Is our next step, are we gonna discuss this more in our next morning meeting, or bring it back to the next, this meeting? With some answers to those questions, is there anything wrong with us discussing some of those questions in our next meeting in two weeks? And I'm sure, our work session, yes, the work session. And maybe not make the final decision, but have a work session, and then come back here, hopefully, with some kind of decision.
Is that a suggestion?
That is.
That's a good one, Craig, thank you. Anything else? We've had a suggestion that we talk about some of the, we discuss further some of the questions and comments that were made tonight at our next scheduled work session meeting, which will be, I think it's two weeks from today.
Would be, yes, it'd be the 23rd, I believe.
Monday, the 23rd at 9:00 a.m. Is that agreeable to everyone? I don't think we have to make a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, if we could just, so it's official, quote-unquote, go ahead and make a motion as to a future course of action, so everybody here understands, I mean, both commissioners and the people in the audience and who may be watching on TV, so everybody's clear on how we're moving forward, if we could do that.
Yeah, I have a question. Will it be a work session with an open floor for people to make comments, or are we just gonna be working through the things that we got from tonight?
Yes, it would, a work session would be just planning commission work session, trying to work through some of the concerns, additional concerns that were raised tonight.
A public meeting, and that's my question.
Well, it's a public, it's a public meeting, and will be advertised as such, but I think you're asking if there's gonna be a public hearing.
Public comments, I'm sorry. Will the public be able to comment during this work session?
Generally, for work sessions, the public does not. Now, you have had work sessions in the past where you have suspended the rules as a commission and have allowed people to speak, so that avenue always does exist for you.
Possible, yes.
If we do suspend the rules this time, they need to be bringing forth facts and not opinion. Let's kinda lay that out for the general public, and that would be fine, in my opinion.
Josh, a question. Told to this public hearing tonight, if we have some deliberations and make some suggested changes, would we need to have another public hearing before we went to a vote situation?
You mean, if you go to the meeting in two weeks, you work through some of the comments, and then the question is, would you be voting at that meeting?
Could we vote at that meeting, or could we vote at the meeting a month from now without having another public hearing?
I don't think you could vote at the next meeting if you're making changes to the document. You may be able to, hang on just a minute.
That usually, kind of, what we've done in the past, and this is not something that we've done often, okay, but usually, after we have a public hearing, we make a decision then. And we're talking about not making a decision tonight, but if we don't make a decision tonight and we have more comments, do we have additional public hearings? Is that, that's what I'm asking.
I think you're not required to have another public hearing in front of the planning commission, that you would still be required to have a public hearing in front of the county commission when it moves forward, but that this body could consider the plan at the next meeting without advertising another public hearing. At the same time, I guess you have the option of having another public hearing if you want to on the amended plan, but it wouldn't be an obligation.
I have a question, Josh. When it leaves here, does it go to a committee out of the commission, out of the county commission, or directly to the hall commission on the floor?
Goes directly.
If I could just add to that, we always make a report to the public, planning and public works committee, but it's just really a report as to what happened the previous month, that's, but, I mean, I believe Josh is correct, but I just wanted you to understand that there is a committee report that we do do.
Craig, if...
Let me make sure I'm understanding. Our next meeting, we're gonna go through our agenda and then add the work session at the end, I believe, tonight.
We've done it a number of times over the last few months, to talk about additional comments that were made tonight and how we respond to those. Craig, I need a motion.
I shall make that motion. As we have discussed, we will have the planning work session in two weeks, and then the next, hopefully, we can work through a lot of these, and then we can come back and make a decision up or down to send it to the full county, county commission.
Have a work session on Monday morning, and then our next Monday evening meeting, make a decision.
Right.
Okay. Okay. We got a motion and a second discussion, Will?
I didn't know we were gonna tie our hands to make that decision in a month. We may still be working on this, but I guess we could make another motion at that point in time to delay the decision, but, I mean, I didn't think we oughta make a decision now while we have time to digest the comments and work on them, but hopefully, we've got a, we're ready to make a decision a month from now, but I guess we can always amend that later on, I just don't wanna tie our hand before we have to.
Well, Will, let me do, let me do that now, you're correct. If we can't work through some of these things, whenever we can work through our problems that we're gonna have to work through, then we'll make that final decision.
Is that your motion?
That's it.
Okay. All right. Work session at our next nine o'clock meeting, which is two weeks from today, and probably a goal is to see if we have those things worked enough to where we can make a decision a month from now, but may not be able to. And that's kinda what we've been doing the last few months, anyway. Mike?
Food for thought. The folks at PB have sat quietly for the last several meetings and listened to public Would it be fair, and I'm asking if this would be a proper thing to do, is at our work session? Because certainly, questions and comments that come from the audience, certainly, some of those need to be clarified and answered by the consulting engineer. I would like to see them at the work session in two weeks to be able to speak on their behalf and defend or clarify things that we've seen tonight that are still unclear and still fuzzy. There's still a lot of fuzziness. And I'm suggesting, and if it makes sense to make it into a motion, I'm suggesting that we allow the consulting engineer to defend or clarify details of the public hearings to date. Is that, is that okay to do?
I mean, I don't know if that necessarily needs to be a motion, but I just kinda looked over at Ms. Kendall, and she nodded her head, that would be fine, so I think we can do that.
Well, and then let me take that one step further. That being the case, I would like to also see that the consulting engineer had the same courtesy of not having a public hearing. Certainly, people can come and listen, and then, but I don't want to have a he said, she said, throw the facts. I'm not looking for a town meeting at this point in time at the next meeting, or a town hall meeting, as it was described. They've sat quietly for months and listened, I think they should have an opportunity to have their voice heard and explain what needs to be explained and not be challenged from the crowd, at least during that work session. I think that's fair.
Comments on the motion?
Is there a motion?
Yeah, we do. No, we've got a motion and a second to have a work session to further discuss this.
No, I think the motion was the original, let's meet again in two weeks and have a work session.
Josh, this motion and second is appropriate.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions on the motion? Comments? All who's in favor, say aye. Any opposition? So be it. Other staff comments, staff reports for tonight?
No, sir, I have nothing further.
Anything else? I have a motion to adjourn, and a second by me, we're adjourned, thank you.